Let us just pause a moment before we get to the business of the day. May we remember where our help comes from. You are the maker of heaven and earth, the reason for us being here and even having a moment such as this that we can gather together. There's no doubt that there are many concerns that will attend us today. We are mindful that you are aware of all those concerns even before we ask them. So Father, in the quietness of this moment, may we turn our concerns over to you with full confidence because you have already demonstrated your love and concern for us through sending your son Jesus Christ. We can know that you care for us. So Father, my prayer of blessing upon this place is that these people here today would pray the same prayer that pleases you, the prayer that Solomon prayed, that they would have wisdom to govern us, to direct our hearts towards the way that is right. Lord, thank you so much for the privilege of living here in the United States of America. And we thank you for your son, Jesus. In his most precious name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Moving on to the approval of the consent agenda, is there anything anyone would like to pull from that?
Move the consent agenda. Second.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Just have number three, just have a quick clarification on it, please.
Good morning.
Good morning. Uh, good morning, Eric.
Good morning.
It's BA 24020. It looks like it's gap funding for Medicaid. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Um, just wondering what, what happens after June 2024? How do we fund?
It will need to be absorbed by a general fund.
I see. That's a, uh, it's a pretty big number. Uh, do you feel confident we have that going forward?
Yes, sir.
Other than that, that answers that question, Eric. I hope we do, yes. Thank you.
We had a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we're going to go to the presentation of service awards and introduction of new employees.
Commissioners, good morning.
Good morning.
It's always a pleasure to be with you, but a particular pleasure on this Monday when we introduce folks that have reached significant milestones in service to the county but have also joined the team. The moratorium on retirements that you placed last month is in full effect. There is no retirement to recognize. That's a joke, y'all can laugh. True, true, there is a standing moratorium on retirements. Our team's just too good for people to leave. That being said, we do have several folks this morning to recognize, as I said, that have reached significant milestones in service to our organization. We're going to recognize both five in 10-year awards this morning. And when I call your name, if you would, please come forward. I'd like to be the first to shake your hand, thank you for what you do, and then invite you to visit with the board and have your picture taken as well. So our first recognition this morning for five years is Stephen Greer in the Department of Social Services. Congratulations, Stephen. Thank you. Commissioners, also with five years of service that we're going to recognize this morning, Leslie Wilder, the Health Department. Commissioners, also with five years of outstanding service to New Hanover County, Shirley Southard, also in the Health Department. Commissioners, we're going to recognize two folks that have 10 years of service to New Hanover County this morning. The first is Tamika Giraud, Diversity and Equity. Tamika, congratulations. Also with 10 years of service, Ivy Crossman, the Department of Social Services. So Commissioners, five years, 10 years of service, I would argue their careers are just beginning with New Hanover County, and I think they deserve another round of applause. So we're going to recognize new folks that have joined the team since the board was last together, or not last together, but the last time you were at this Monday morning meeting. So when I call your name, if you would, please stand up. We want to recognize you and actually invite you to come forward and say hello to the board as well. We may not take a picture other than in motion, but welcome to the team. And so the first person I'd like to recognize this morning is Dana Ash, Public Health. Dana, thank you for coming to work with us. Cynthia Bronson, also in the Department of Public Health. Cynthia, thank you for coming to work with us. Mariana Chofani, also in the Department of Public Health. Congratulations and thank you for coming to work. Caress Clegg, Communications and Outreach. Caress, thank you for coming to work with us. Heather Dusky, also in the Department of Public Health. Heather, thank you for coming to work with us. Jason Fuller, Emergency Management. Angela Gaines, Health and Human Services, Centralized Support. Thank you. Thank you for coming to work. Caroline Hester, the Department of Public Health. Caroline, thank you for coming to work with us. Benjamin Johnston, Building Inspections Permitting Division. Thank you for coming to work with us. Megan McKeithen, Community Justice Services. Megan, thank you for joining the team. Sean Tucker, the Department of Public Health. Thank you for coming to work with us. Victoria Wazaloski, Planning and Land Use. Victoria, thank you for coming to work with us. Elizabeth Williams, also with the Department of Public Health. Elizabeth, thank you for coming to work with us. Last, but certainly not least, David Wood, also in the Department of Public Health. Commissioners, we've recognized some outstanding folks this morning, folks that have been with us for a while, those that have just joined the team, I think have a great career ahead of them. Ms. Chairman, if you would lead us in a round of applause for all of them. So Commissioners, if you don't mind staying put, we have two other recognitions to do this morning, and they are Government Finance Officers Association Awards. And so we're going to be recognizing outstanding excellence in financial reporting, but also in budget. And so if you're here, you're part of the budget team and the finance team that is here, if y'all would start making your way up to have your picture made with the board. But as it relates to, Eric, you appeared, did you want to say something?
Sure, yeah. I think you know that we've got a finance department that has some of the highest quality employees, enroll proud of them. Today, we bring to your attention two teams within that department that have received awards from the Government Finance Officers Association, which is a national organization that evaluates their work. I'm going to ask the leaders of these two teams to step forward and recognize their teammates who are here today. First, Michelle Daniels, as you know, leads our budget department, and recently the GFOA awarded New Hanover County's Fiscal Year 2023 adopted budget document with the distinguished budget presentation award. This means a team of three independent reviewers found that our budget document to meet the highest quality standards for budgeting, including specific guidelines and best practices established by the GFOA. Michelle and her team strive for excellence in preparing our budget document, and as evidenced by this award, their work is of the highest quality. Michelle, will you introduce your teammates?
Thank you, Eric. Gwen Hill, Karen Hurley, Jeremy Ashworth, and Scott Steinheilber could not be with us today.
Next, I'll ask Martha Wayne to come forward. Martha is our Deputy Chief Financial Officer and leads the team that prepares our annual comprehensive financial report, which is a detailed accounting of receipts and expenditures that is presented in accordance with government accounting standards. Several weeks ago, we received notification that the GFOA has awarded the county's fiscal year 2022 financial report with a certificate for achievement, certificate of achievement for excellence, which is the highest form of recognition in this area of government financial reporting. By receiving this designation, the county's financial report was found to demonstrate a constructive spirit of full disclosure to clearly communicate the county's financial story and motivate potential users to read the report. Martha and her team ensure that our taxpayers' funds are properly accounted for and reported with the highest level of transparency. Martha?
With me here today, I have Teresa Hewitt, Maria Stanfest, Beverly Thomas, and Eileen Kluwer.
I did not mean to get ahead of Eric. I'm glad you said all that you had to say. And, you know, Eric's been with us for a little more than a year, outstanding leadership. He provides the leadership to both our budget and finance teams on a daily basis. Congratulations to you. Thank you to the whole team. What didn't get mentioned is if, if you're interested in longevity, the, the budget recognition is the 32nd consecutive year, and the finance recognition is the 42nd consecutive year. So that speaks to the quality of budget and finance staff that this organization has had for the better part of, of two generations. And we've got a team that's going to continue leading that way going forward. And if I could, I would like to invite them to come forward and have their picture made with the board. Congratulations, y'all.
All right. One, two, three.
Mr. Manager, I would love to have recorded that. I've got somebody I would like to send it to.
Ms. Chairman, I believe it is recorded.
Well, I'd make sure that he gets to see it. Next is Consideration of Breast Cancer Awareness Month Proclamation. Whereas in the year 2023, a staggering 10,730 women residing in North Carolina are expected to receive the daunting diagnosis of breast cancer with an unfortunate production of 1,450 lives lost to the devastating disease. And whereas women in North Carolina face a one-in-eight lifetime risk of encountering breast cancer, making it as the second-leading cause of cancer-related deaths among women in the United States. And whereas the impact of breast cancer is notably higher among non-white women in comparison to white women with driving factors including disparity in income, education, and across to healthcare services, access to healthcare services, underscoring the critical need for enhanced breast cancer screening and early detection initiatives. And whereas the North Carolina Breast and Cervical Cancer Control Program steadfastly extends free or low-cost breast and cervical cancer screening along with necessary follow-up care to eligible uninsured and underinsured women. And whereas, through the consistent implementation of mammogram screening and diligent follow-up testing, the early detection of breast cancer becomes a distinct possibility, enabling prompt and effective treatment that is ultimately, can ultimately save lives. And whereas fostering awareness of the abundance of health information, educational resources, treatment options, and support networks available empowers individuals grappling with breast cancer to seek and receive tailored care and vital resources essential for enhancing their overall quality of life. Now therefore be proclaimed by the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners that October 2023 will be recognized as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in New Hanover County, and in doing so encourages all women to obtain regular health screenings to provide the detection of breast cancer adopted the 16th day of October 2023.
Hi, thank you. I'm Michelle McGrath. I'm the Clinical Services Manager in Public Health, and I wanted to thank the Commissioners for acknowledging the proclamation for breast cancer awareness. I also wanted to spotlight the Breast and Cervical Cancer Awareness, excuse me, the Breast and Cervical Cancer Prevention Program. This is a state-sponsored program, as you mentioned, and we provide screening and diagnostic testing for breast cancer. Eligibility criteria are uninsured or under-resourced, under-resourced women who are residents of New Hanover County aged 40 to 64. Over the last year, New Hanover County Public Health provided screening and navigation services for 56 women. The Breast and Cervical Cancer Control Program Coordinator stays in touch with women who need multiple screenings to ensure that they are receiving the recommended medical consultation visits. For women diagnosed with breast cancer, the nurse navigator will provide referrals to treatment and assist with applying for Breast and Cervical Cancer Medicaid. The Breast and Cervical Cancer Program, Control Program is a critical service to our community. And behalf, on behalf of public health and the women we serve, we thank the Commissioners for supporting this program.
Move the proclamation.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Which one, I'm sorry, which one are we doing, Mr. Chairman? Number nine? I think that I have a different, the one that you gave me is a different.
Domestic violence.
But I can, I think I can read it from the top. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Proclamation for Consideration, Domestic Violence Awareness Month Proclamation. Whereas domestic violence transcends all ethnic, racial, gender, and socioeconomic boundaries, weakening the very core of our community. And whereas the effects of domestic violence are far-reaching and may have lifetime implications for families, the criminal justice system, and our community. And whereas, Domestic Violence Shelter and Services Incorporated provides emergency crisis intervention and ongoing support and services in New Hanover County for victims and survivors of domestic abuse. And whereas, 1,305 adults and 138 children received direct services such as court accompaniment, advocacy, empowerment groups and counseling, including 118 adults and 110 children who received emergency shelter through Domestic Violence Shelter Services, Shelter and Services, Inc., in the year 2022. And whereas, on September 4th, 2002, Gladys Bryant, an employee of New Hanover County for more than two decades, and on August 6th, 2008, Tarsha Polium, an employee of New Hanover County for two years, lost their lives in acts of domestic violence exhibiting to all their coworkers and friends the prevalence of domestic violence and its consequences. And whereas, many other persons throughout New Hanover County in the United States find themselves in abusive relationships and need to find a safe and empowering environment. And whereas, this year's theme, Stronger Together, serves as a call to action to the citizens of New Hanover County to encourage, support, and empower one another to live lives free from violence. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners refuses to tolerate domestic violence in any form and wishes to create a society that promotes strong values, fosters a safe and loving home environment for every family, and encourages our citizens to enhance their efforts to work together to address the problem of domestic violence. Be it further proclaimed by the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners that October 2023 be recognized as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in New Hanover County, adopted the 16th day of October 2023 by New Hanover County William E. Reivenbar, Chair.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
My name is Caitlin Harrison. I'm the Development Director for Domestic Violence Shelter and Services, and I would just like to thank New Hanover County for helping us serve the good people of this county. Domestic violence is not an easy thing to go through, and we are happy to be here to support in any way that we can. We do have a 24/7 crisis line, and we are able to provide 24/7 crisis intervention. And I would like to invite everyone in this room to our rally event that will be at Dream Center of Arts Education this Thursday at 6:30.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Whereas substance abuse prevention is vital in both individual and community health, and whereas the 2021 National Survey on Drug Use and Health estimated that 16.36% of North Carolina residents age 18 and older had a substance use disorder. And whereas an estimated 24.33% of North Carolinians aged 18 to 25 had a substance use disorder in 2021, implying the need for targeted prevention and awareness efforts. And whereas data suggests that over 11 North Carolinians died each day from a drug overdose in 2022, and whereas there were approximately 83 deaths from drug overdose in New Hanover County in 2022. And whereas, New Hanover County Department of Social Services reported 53.1% of children in foster care due to parental substance use in 2022. And whereas the key to substance use prevention is talking openly with our children and helping them understand the impact of substance abuse on their health. And whereas studies show that the earlier an individual starts smoking, drinking, or using other drugs, the greater the likelihood of developing an addiction. And whereas every year substance use is delayed during adolescent brain development, the risk of addition, addiction, and substance abuse decreases. And whereas we commit to remember those who have lost their lives to substance abuse, to acknowledge those in recovery and support the children, parents, family, and friends touched by substance abuse. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners that October 2023 will be recognized as National Substance Abuse Prevention Month in New Hanover County, and urges all residents and community organizations to join in this observance through reflection and raising awareness of the role substance use disorder plays in community health. Adopted the 16th day of October 2023 by William E. Reivenbar, Chair.
Is there a motion to approve?
Oh, motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Ms. Wilder?
Good morning. I'm Leslie Wilder. I'm a Licensed Clinical Therapy Supervisor for New Hanover County Health and Human Services, and I'm also a Licensed Clinical Addiction Specialist. And I would just like to thank the Commissioners for adopting this proclamation for this month. So we're, every four to five years, we're doing these maintenance projects. There's an agreement in place that all the sand that is dredged out of that inlet gets placed onto Figure Eight Island, that, that is contracted with them at five dollars and fifty cents per cubic yard. This year, we anticipate and estimate the quantity of sand to be half a million cubic yards. The project is, it is paid through, paid for through the room occupancy tax and then reimbursed through assessment at completion of the project. This year, we had three bidders for the project. Otten Marine out of Florida was the low bidder at four million six, six hundred and fifty, no, six million four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that will be divided through assessment and partially paid for through a shallow draft inlet grant. And that's, that's what is before you today. Staff is recommending award to Otten Marine.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Tim, thank you for your presentation. So the total of six million four hundred and fifty thousand dollars is coming from ROT.
Yes.
And then it will be distributed or paid for by the homeowners at Figure Eight through an assessment.
Figure Eight and North Wrightsville Beach, so Figure Eight will pay five dollars and fifty cents per cubic yard, so we're estimating five hundred thousand cubic yards to be placed, so that is around two point seven five million, that would come from Figure Eight. The remainder is shared by North Wrightsville Beach, and that is offset, partially seventy-five percent roughly, is the offset through the shallow draft inlet grant.
And is that something that we apply for every time we utilize these funds?
Yes, sir.
Make this?
Yes, sir.
And is that the normal amount that we always get, or is it less, more?
It's a seventy-five, twenty-five, that's traditionally what it is, so seventy-five percent covered by the grant, twenty-five percent local shares, and that's what North Wrightsville Beach pays.
So they get a much bigger break on the?
Excuse me?
They get a much bigger break, it looks like, then, than folks?
Uh, this year, we had very good bid numbers. It's actually quite a bit lower than we anticipated, so it helps the contractor that was awarded, or that we're recommending award to, they're doing a similar project in Merle's Inlet in South Carolina right now, so the mobilization cost was much lower than we anticipated.
So the? I'm not sure there, I'm not, I'm sorry. I'm sure there are folks that are here that remember when Shell Island was about to fall into the water. I remember standing beside there with a fishing rod and seeing how fast the current was going through there, and know the real estate community was in awe and great concern that it was structured to fall in, you know, what would that mean for Wrightsville Beach number one, but also additional property owners number two, and so I'm glad that the Board of Commissioners at that time chose to make this investment and relocate the inlet, and now it's pristine down there, and, you know, Mother Nature's gonna do what she does, and there are ways that we can find to mitigate some of those impacts sometime, which is what we did here, so thank you for your hard work.
Yeah, we, we have tremendous staff that have come up with the maintenance schedules for these inlets, and we appreciate your support in, in ensuring that those, those go forward. It's very, actually innovative way that we handle it here in New Hanover County.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Tim, so the, the room occupancy tax is really the backbone of this project and many others, is that correct?
Yes, it's specifically in this one, many of the others are funded through federal money with Army Corps of Engineers.
Right. How, how are we doing with the balance in there, or is the ROT able to keep up, is it sustainable, the way the percentages are at this time?
We, we have some representatives from finance here, that might be better served to, to answer that, but, yeah, I'll leave that to Eric.
Commissioners, Apple, we do have a separate sand fund, it's got around fifty million dollars in it, we do various sensitivity analysis to project how long that fund will last us, but right now it's sufficiently funded.
Right, and looks sustainable into the near future, is that?
It, it does. Again, it's highly dependent on how much these things cost every time, and the assumption that we're gonna continue to get federal funding, and we continue to get federal funding at the seventy-five, twenty-five breakout, we're good for indefinitely in the future. If that ever gets pulled back, then it'll, it'll, there's not nearly as much cushion in that regard.
Thank you very much, Eric.
Before you leave, Eric, just a quick question. Is that coming from the, the sand fund in the first three percent, or the unincorporated three percent that we use for dredging I do down at Carolina Beach Inlet and some other inlets?
The primary funding for the sand fund comes from the first three percent, that's either forty percent or sixty percent, Linda. Sixty percent of the first three percent goes into the sand fund.
So it's coming from that first area?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'd also just take a moment and like to point out that we have Leighton Bedzold here in the audience, better known to most of us as the Sand Man, and that is the author and really the grandfather of the, all these initiatives that have kept our beaches so well renourished. Leighton, could you wave your hand so people could recognize you?
Thank you very much. Thank you for your good work.
I think Leighton came on about twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve, and has really been a tremendous asset to our community. When you have a name like the Sand Man, when people say the Sand Man, they know who you are, they know who we're talking about. I mean, you've helped Wrightsville Beach, Carolina Beach, and Currie Beach, as well as the county in so many ways, and come up with templates to re-nourish the beaches and a whole host of other things, so great to see you, Mr. Sand Man. I make a motion that we approve the award to the maintenance dredging contract to Otten Marine and Construction Company, LSC, for six million five, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you. We're gonna take a five-minute break, we got a little technical issue we got to fix.[1006.69]
The monitor, this monitor right here is not working. So we're going to have to look at these right here, whoever's speaking. You got something else?
Yes.
That's okay.
Are you ready, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. This is really dovetails on with what Tim just talked about. So he, which you all just approved was a granting of the next dredging of the inlet. This is the assessment process that takes place after the fact. And this agenda item is to begin the process to assess the property owners of North Wrightsville Beach and Figure Eight Island for costs incurred over the past five years for one relocation of the inlet and four regular maintenance events. Here's just a picture that you talked about earlier, but this is the picture of what it looked like in 1999. There was obviously an emergency that was identified. There was a group of impacted property owners from Wrightsville Beach and Figure Eight Island called the Mason Inlet Preservation Group, worked with the Board of Commissioners at that time to determine a process for moving the inlet back northward and a way to pay for the related cost. This slide shows the successful result of that process. The resolution that was passed on July 12th, 1999 that led to the successful result we just saw included the following key provisions. The original pathway of the Mason Inlet would be dredged and the dredged sand would be used to close the existing pathway that was close to Shell Island. And the excess sand would be pumped on the Figure Eight Island as beach re-nourishment. Second, all costs of the project were to be assessed to the benefited properties, which was determined by the Mason Inlet Preservation Group and included all of the Figure Eight, all of Figure Eight Island and approximately sixty parcels of land on northern Wrightsville Beach. As Tim noted, Figure Eight Island was to pay an assessment based on the amount of sand pumped onto their beach at a cost of $5.50 per cubic yard, with the cost allocated differently by the Figure Eight Island based on whether the property was oceanfront or not. All remaining costs are to be borne by North Wrightsville Beach. The Basin Inlet Preservation Group worked out a formula for Wrightsville Beach's assessment based on a combination of their property value and their distance from the inlet. This slide depicts the assessment area with North Wrightsville Beach to the left side and Figure Eight Island to the right side. The first relocation happened in January of 2022 and new relocations have occurred generally every five years with maintenance performed in the other years. The practice of the county has been to pay for, pay for out of the sand fund and accumulate costs over that five-year period and then assess the benefited property owners for those costs. This slide shows a history of the assessments with the current year calculated assessment of just $4 million at the bottom of the page. The cost is, the cost for each time is largely dependent on the severity of the inlet relocations and the respective assessment periods. This slide shows the breakout of the cost of the total current assessment that begins on the date just after the prior assessment of August 1st, 2018 and goes through August 31st, 2023. This shows how the assessment of Figure Eight Island was computed. Again, just taking 414,000 cubic yards of sand that was pumped at $5.50 per cubic yard to arrive at $2,281,521. This slide shows the components of the all-other costs that North Wrightsville Beach incurs as relates to the assessment. You can see the total amounts to $1,787,518. To begin the assessment process, staff is recommending that you pass the resolution included in your materials, which includes a determination of cost and that cost being $4,069,039. Direct staff to prepare preliminary assessment roll and a project map to mail each owner a notice of the hearing and to prepare and publish all required notices. And to set a November 2023, November 20th, 2023 is a date for the public hearing. All of these things are statutorily required. If the resolution is approved, this would be the ensuing timeline. On October 26th, we would publish the notice of the public hearing and mail a notice to the preliminary assessment roll. We would have the public hearing on November the 20th and then we'll begin mailing the final assessments on December the 11th.
How many people on Shell Island participate in that? Is it just the people at the end of the beach, end of the island or?
There's approximately sixty parcels that are assessed, fifty-eight of those are lots. And then the Shell Island Resort has got 169 condos as part of it. But sixty parcel property, one of which is the big Shell Island Resort, which has 169 condo owners.
Is there a motion to approve or is anyone having a discussion?
I do want to make one comment, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
It's important to note again, that's something we didn't say before with the last item, that things like this and beach re-nourishment don't cost the taxpayers in our community anything. It's come by the, it comes from those that stay in our hotels. The room, our tax covers beach re-nourishment. We get the benefit from our great beaches but not have to pay for those. So again, just want to point that out to folks that are watching and the folks that are here. With that, I make a motion that we approve this next step. Termination of costs and establish November 2023 as a date for the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just a point of discussion. Eric, is the $5.50 cubic yard, is that a set number that is adjusted each time we do the assessment? Or is that a historical number?
That's an historical number. That was the amount that was set in 1999 and it's been carried forward at each assessment since then.
Is it still appropriate today? I mean, is it enough to be able to sustain the fund moving forward?
The $5.50 really just comes into play as it relates to the breakout of the total cost between Figure Eight Island and Wrightsville Beach. If you were to increase that amount, then Figure Eight would pay more and Wrightsville Beach would pay less. You know, as it comes out this year, Figure Eight's allocation's about 54% and Wrightsville Beach is about 46%. So it's almost a 50/50 split this year, this assessment period.
So do we see any adjustment in that in the future? Or are we good with the amount of money that it raises?
I think that's a policy decision. You know, just looking at it seems roughly equitable, but you know, I think that would be a negotiating point. There's been sort of an agreement that, and it's, I think it's informal at this point regarding the cost. It'd be kind of a thirty-year would be the time period that we would kind of go as we have in the past and perhaps renegotiate at some point in the future.
Okay, but there's no plan at this point?
No.
Got it. Thank you.
The only thing that would throw a wrench in that deal is if we had two Category Four Hurricanes that hit in the same year. And all we're talking about right now is out of the window.
I second Commissioner Barfield's motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Eric. Presentation of New Hanover County Commission for Women update. This happens?
Good morning.
Morning.
Yay, I was hoping I had a PowerPoint this time. I feel like I was just here. I was here in August when you gave us the resolution for Women's Equality Day. Except today I have a PowerPoint and I have on matching shoes. Last time I had a black and a dark navy. Didn't realize it till I got to the car. Our beautiful logo, and I want to mention that I'm joined by two of my fellow commissioners, Jane Bernbach and Lindy Ford. There are eleven of us and I'm happy to say that for the last several months, we've actually had a full roster. It had been several years that we were missing, but we are at eleven now. Do I push this to go to the next slide? Yes. Just briefly, some of the speakers that we've had at our Commission for Women meeting since the last time we met, the New Hanover Council for Women. We've had Joe Conway when he was hired from the City of Wilmington as their Chief Equity and Inclusion Officer. We had North Carolina House Representative Charlie Miller. It was really cool to have Mia Blackwelder. She is a Girl Scout who was working on a balloon release project. When Amy Block Deloche was a candidate, we had her. Representative from the Feminist Student Alliance from UNCW. Someone from Unseen Project Lightning Strike, Cape Fear Latinos. We had both Marcia Morgan and Michael Lee when they were both candidates for the North Carolina Senate District Seven. A member of the Wakama Sewan Tribe. Someone from North Carolina Early Childhood Foundation. Play-in Parenthood Domestic Violence Shelter. We had Commissioner Leanne Pierce and the Executive Director of the American Red Cross. And when you pull our bylaws, the first bylaw we have, and again, we are a joint commission between the city and the county, is to identify the status of women and assess the needs of women in New Hanover County and the City of Wilmington. How we took that responsibility seriously was to create our own survey in collaboration with Cape Fear Collective. We call it a poll survey. You can see it on the screen. We even have a QR code. We basically were email campaigning that, so to speak. If we were at an event, we would have a little stand with a QR code, try to get people to take it then. We did get 271 responses to that survey. Two hundred and forty-one were in English and twenty-six were in Spanish. It was interesting to find that the English number one and number two concern were healthcare and personal safety. And the Spanish wasn't a whole lot off. Childcare was their number one, but personal safety was still their second concern. And I just want to mention that Lindy and I were at the Med Trade Show on Saturday, the Minority Enterprise Development Trade Show. And we asked people the question instead of a paper survey or QR code. And we're, I thought in the beginning when I was personally asking, I was getting people that were saying empowerment for women were their most important. Well, that made sense given the venue we were at and also pay equity. And it still ended up at the end that more people were interested in their personal and family safety. So I feel really good about that. We were just discussing prior to me coming up here that we are going to tweak it a little bit more. We got some answers we hadn't anticipated on that survey. So we want to update our survey and keep working for you to bring you our organic information. There we go. We also, as I said, got invited, or got involved in the community. We sponsored one of the North, or New Hanover County Connect Events. We got a primo date in eight March. It was beautiful, people wanted to be outside. And again, we talked about our survey and our equity award. I also had the benefit and the privilege to sponsor the changemakers that was sponsored by the county. In the month of March, we really recognized some awesome women here in New Hanover County and several of the commissioners joined me then as well. Here we are pictured supporting the YWCA who has a permanent seat on the Commission for Women. Belva Jenkins or her designee is a permanent member. And that's to recognize their week without violence in the color purple. We also have an inspiration award. We spent a lot of time on this year, taking some time to make sure we agreed on criteria. Super excited that we give this award from kids making it here in town. This year we gave it out at city council, next year we'll be doing it here. Here, here's a couple of us volunteering for the Williston Legacy Graduation. Here we are this year for the, you recognized us with the Proclamation for Women's Equality Day. There was an event the year prior when we went. You can see our little stands there with our survey. Here I am in August with you all for recognition of Women's Equality Day. I am so sorry, I am not sounding great today. I did share this information when I came, that we just looked at pay equity. And I cannot read that far, but I believe it's seventy-five cents on the dollar still for women in New Hanover County per our collaboration with Cape Fear Collective. Seventy-eight cents. And she also shared a slide with us that I believe that it will take, again, forgive me that I can't see that far, that no gender parity under the current rate will occur until 2053. So again, thanks to Cape Fear Collective for their help with that. And that may be, that is my last slide. So thank you for your time. We are working hard for you and look forward to being back here again next year. Thank you.
As the presentation of the Wilmington Urban Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, Mr. Zalowski?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thanks for the opportunity to be here this morning. We've got a two-part presentation. The first part is I'm going to be up here discussing our annual report. And then the second part of the presentation, I'll turn it over to Vanessa Lacer. He's the Senior Transportation Planner with the Wilmington MPO. And she is going to overview Cape Fear Navigating Change 2050. We are out on a circuit, we're making this presentation to all of our member jurisdictions. And so we're here this morning. As I mentioned, the first part of the presentation is to discuss our annual report. As part of our strategic plan, one of the items that our board identified was a desire for us to come out and identify and present on the programs and services that we provide. And so we've decided to present our annual report to each of our members and I'm here this morning to do that. So just first, a little bit about the Metropolitan Planning Organization. We do provide transportation planning services for 494 square miles of population of about 300,000 people. MPOs were created out of the Federal Highway Act of 1962. We are the federally mandated and federally funded transportation planning organization for the Wilmington region. As I mentioned, MPOs were created out of the Federal Highway Act of 1962. This was for any urbanized area of population of 50,000 or greater. We actually elevated our designation to a transportation management area back in 2012, which meant our population threshold went over 200,000. That required additional reporting requirements, but also provided us some funding, our direct attributable funds that we provide to our members through a competitive process on an annual basis. We are required by federal law to conduct transportation planning in the three-C process, which is continuing, cooperative and comprehensive. As I mentioned, we provide transportation planning for 494 square miles. We were established in 1973 based on the 1970 census. And we served seven municipalities and all are portions of three counties and our members are identified on the slide. We have a thirteen-member board that sets the policy and direction for the organization. You recognize two faces on this board, Commissioner Barfield and Commissioner Scalise, both serve on our board and do provide direction to staff. We have a number of federal requirements and responsibilities. The development of our long-range transportation plan. Currently, we operate under Cape Fear, now, or Cape Fear moving forward 2045. Vanessa's going to talk a little bit about Cape Fear Navigating Change 2050 in a minute. As I talked about, we disperse direct attributable funds to our member jurisdictions through a competitive process. We develop congestion management process. And what that is, is it evaluates thirty-three of our major corridors throughout the region and provides recommendations. Those recommendations then feed into the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. We also adopt our federal functional classification system. This classifies roadways, whether they be freeway, principal arterial, major collector, minor collector or local street. And then we also provide technical services such as development review, traffic impact analysis review. And then we operate the Go Coast Transportation Demand Management Program. We've got a staff of twelve within the organization and are very educated, knowledgeable and work very diligently on behalf of the MPO and our members. This slide just demonstrates an overview of some of our successes that I'm going to talk about here over the past fiscal year, which ran from July 1 to June 30. And so the first is we've adopted an organizational assessment. And this organizational assessment really outlines how to improve the efficiency and effectiveness of the organization. It does break down recommendations into short, medium and long-term recommendations. And we are going to start implementing that in our next fiscal year. Long-range planning efforts, the board as well as our member jurisdictions have adopted a number of our plans. And so the first is the 2022 annual congestion management process. And that report was adopted by the board as well as two planning documents in the VASSA. One is their Collector Street Plan as well as their Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan. We've also worked on a number of other efforts that had not been adopted by June 30, but were ongoing as of June 30. And those are Bike Ped Plan in Pender County as well as the Wakawamington Pedestrian Plan update. As well as we've partnered with the North Carolina Department of Transportation on a number of feasibility studies. The MPO is actually the applicant for the Golagichi Heritage Corridor feasibility study in Brunswick County as well as the Downtown Trail Phases Two and Three in the City of Wilmington. As well as we are also working with the Town of Curry Beach and East Coast Greenway on a feasibility study for the Island Greenway down in Curry Beach. We have adopted the 2024 to 2033 State and Metropolitan Transportation Improvement Program. This program is required to mutually be adopted by the MPO as well as the North Carolina Department of Transportation. This is a two-year process that we go through to develop this plan or program. It's a competitive process where we're required to submit projects. They go through a scoring process. The MPOs provide local input. And then the output is this transportation improvement program. And so we adopted the 2024 to 2033 program just in July. And so the next step is to go to the next process. We wrap one up, we move to the next. And so the next process is the prioritization seven point O. We can submit up to twenty projects. They're then scored. We've, we have submitted the projects for consideration in seven point O. And so that has been done just in, in August. And then as the bipartisan infrastructure bill was passed and signed by President Biden in 2021, that provides a number of discretionary grant programs that the MPOs are eligible to apply for or to. And so we have applied for a Safe Streets and Roads for All grant that would help to improve safety in the region as well as a protect grant that would be for a resiliency improvement plan for our planning area boundary. Cape Fear Navigating Change 2050, Vanessa's going to talk a little bit about this in a second, so I'm just going to skip over this slide. And then some other board highlights. We have had a successful certification review. As I mentioned early on in the presentation, we are a designated transportation management area. And so one of the requirements of that is that the Federal Highway Administration and Federal Transit Administration certify that we're conducting the transportation planning process in that three-C manner and that we meet all the federal requirements. We are continuing to coordinate with the North Carolina Department of Transportation on the replacement of the Cape Fear Memorial Bridge. We've had a number of successful achievements out as part of our strategic plan. We have, we were recipient from NC DOT for the bicycle helmet program and we're in the process of giving out a hundred bicycle helmets. And we've also coordinated with NC DOT on August redistribution. Our board heard a presentation about that at their August meeting. But one of the things that is important is we were able to partner with NC DOT to bring an additional $265 million of federal obligation authority to the state of North Carolina. As I mentioned, our TDM program, it's Go Coast. We've had a number of successes in that program. We hold an annual ride in Brunswick County, the Heritage Ride. And we had one in '22 and then just recently, last month, we had a successful ride in '23. We operate a commuter challenge, which tries to promote and get people out of their single occupancy vehicles. This is through carpooling, van pooling, alternative work schedules and the like. And so we are currently going through a campaign, Get There Greener, which goes from October 1st to October 31st. But we did have a successful commuter challenge last October as well. And then the River to Sea Ride, we offer a ride from downtown Wilmington out to Wrightsville Beach and back. And then the River to Sea Ride, we offer a ride from downtown Wilmington out to Wrightsville Beach and back. And that's been a success. And then we've increased the amount of participation on our social media. We are renovating a historic building down at 525 North Fourth Street. The commission had contributed for a portion of the funding for this renovation. We're very appreciative of that. That renovation continues to be ongoing. And we do hope to be in that building in early 2024. As I mentioned, we have a technical services side, as well as the planning side of the house. Our technical services side provides a development review, TIA review, and a traffic count program. So we've been part of over 1,100 site development reviews, 73 traffic impact analysis reviews, as well as collected over 500 traffic counts, whether those be annual traffic counts. We have 372 that we collect annually. But then we also accept special requests from our members, whether that be for development proposals that come before you, or for bike ped counts, or things of the like. And then the direct attributable funds, we allocate about $5 million annually to our members through competitive processes. And so this slide demonstrates the funds that were allocated through the 2023 call. And this map demonstrates the 25 projects that are currently ongoing through the use of those funds. And so with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions or turn the presentation over to Vanessa to talk about Cape Fear Navigating Change 2050.
Mr. Chairman. Mike, thanks for the report. Just a couple of things for, so I understand better. In one of your graphs, the MPO organizational assessment, you had a note there that says to modify the LPA agreement to benefit the WMPO. What is an LPA agreement?
So the LPA agreement is our Lead Planning Agency Agreement. And so that is an agreement that we have with the city of Wilmington, who acts as the lead planning agency. And that agreement was, the agreement we're operating under was developed in 1993. So we are in the process of updating that agreement. And so this recommendation is to develop an agreement that does benefit the organization.
The MPO?
Yes, sir.
Taking the emphasis off the city and putting it on the MPO, or?
We're currently in negotiations with the city regarding that agreement.
We're talking about it. And in the August redistribution, it was wonderful, kind of a note that was in there. You mentioned a big number. How much of that big number will come to us?
Well, it really has a trickle-down effect. We've not been provided the list. However, you know, it's really paying for funds that DOT would have paid for next year, where they're able to pay for those projects this year.
So how much?
We don't, again, we don't have a number that they've given to us as to being spent in this region. It's really at a statewide level.
I see. Last question, I noticed in the technical services, did I read that right? That we paid $1.5 million to put a stoplight in at Anne and South Third?
There's, there was a project, there's two projects that are funded through our direct attributable program downtown. One is at Third and Anne, and one is at Third and Orange. And so those, those funds that were requested by the city of Wilmington and NC DOT were allocated to those projects. And so it's, what the presentation shows, about $1 million for that traffic signal, yes, sir.
I think there were two items there, and the combination of them comes to $1.5 million. That just seems like a huge amount for, I'm familiar with both those projects, but is that simply what it costs?
Yes, I mean, that's based on, there's an estimate that's developed. So you are correct, Commissioners Apple, there was 971 to the city of Wilmington and 542 to NC DOT. Actually, NC DOT is going to manage both of those projects. But those costs were verified. There's an estimate that's required as part of our submittal package. We verify those estimates, and then we allocate those funds.
Wow.
Traffic signals have gone up a lot over the past decade or so.
I guess, but he, that's an eye popper, $1.5 million. Oh, my God. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
You know, looking at the cost of traffic signals, recognizing that many times developers are paying for those as well. You know, looking at Eastwood Road and Autumn Hall, and it was over $4 million spent by the developer to improve road improvements there, to make traffic flow better. I'm sure there can be some costs spread out on Gordon Road as well. I know the traffic like that went up in there was somewhat developer-driven as well to accommodate the growth that's taking place there. It was not always on the backs of the county or the city or DOT, but also spread out to those that are helping to increase traffic in our community as well. I did note the number of TIA's or traffic studies that you all did this past year. And this is quite significant. And it's not just for the county, it's for the city, it's for, I'm sure, Carolina, Curry and Wrightsville Beach as well, where they have projects there. And this notes and shows that growth is taking place in this region. And the tremendous work that your department does, I mean, that's a lot of studies to implement and be in charge of. So I appreciate the great work that you all are doing.
Thank you, Commissioner Barfield.
And on the second note, I did sign, I tried to sign up for the Bike, the River to Beach Bike Ride. But I realized that as I do about a seven-mile ride in my neighborhood, that I probably would not have made it there or back, based on my current stamina. But hopefully, in the next five years, I'll be there.
Well, I will say two things. One, that the River to Sea Ride, it, we had a cap of 450 pre-registrants. And that sold out, and there's no cost for it. But it was at capacity within just a couple of days. And then as it relates to your riding ability, we do have other means. If you can't make the whole route, we can pick you up. We've got a truck that we use, and so we can shuttle people around if needed. So I would encourage you to participate next year if you like.
I might need a ride.
Mike, let me just ask you one question. When Chad was here talking to us recently, he was telling us that replacing the bridge would cost X amount of dollars. And instead of doing that, they can fix all these other projects. Won't it always be like that?
So the replacement of the bridge is a tricky project. And you know, we're currently working with NC DOT on a three-pronged approach to evaluate that project, one being through the traditional funding prioritization process. The other is through tolling or alternative funding, and then the public-private partnership. And then the last part of that, which is probably the more realistic, is to look and try to find some grants to cover or offset the cost. As I mentioned previously in one of the slides, it talked about the bipartisan infrastructure bill. And as part of that bill, there are a number of discretionary programs. And so what becomes the tricky part of that is trying to identify the local match. But we are currently working with NC DOT on this project. And so to answer your question, we've got a lot of needs in this community. When we develop Cape Fear Moving Forward 2045, there were actually $7 billion worth of unmet needs in this region over a 25-year period. And so our long-range transportation plan is, requires a fiscal analysis. It, per federal law, is required to be fiscally constrained. And so what that means is the projects that are included in that plan, we have to be able to financially pay for and be able to justify through a financial analysis. And so we have a number of needs. I will say this, that the North Carolina Department of Transportation is making some great progress on a number of the projects in our region. You know, we've got a number of interchange projects that are in the plans that are actually funded and going to come online. And I'm sure Chad told you this, you know, several years ago, I was out and giving a talk. And you know, I said we were going to see a number of orange construction cones around this region. And we are, we thought that it was going to happen a little bit sooner. But you know, in the near future, we are, it's going to be difficult to drive around this community without seeing cones and barrels. And so, but we're working together. I mean, it's a collaborative process between the MPO and DOT on these projects. And so, you know, we need to replace the bridge. It's nearing its useful life, and we're trying to figure out how to do that.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you for your support to each one of the commissioners. We really appreciate it. And so I'm going to turn it over to Vanessa now to talk about Cape Fear Navigating Change 2050.
Lou?
Good morning. It's a pleasure to be here this morning. My name is Vanessa Lacer. I am the Senior Transportation Planner for the Wilmington Urban Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, or WMPO. And I am grateful for the opportunity to be with you, to give you some information and an update on our 2050 Metropolitan Transportation Plan, which is called Cape Fear Navigating Change 2050. So I'll first give a little overview. I'll let you know what we've been up to, our next steps. And then I want to also make sure to let citizens that are here or watching know how they can get involved and make sure that their transportation needs are heard. So first, a little overview. As Mike mentioned, we are a federal organization, which comes with federal responsibilities. One of those responsibilities is the creation and update every five years of this transportation plan. This plan identifies the region's transportation network. It really is the blueprint of our region. It looks at what the region will need for the next 25 years. So not just the problems now, or the concerns or needs now, but what will be needed in five years, 10 years, and 25 years. Our current plan is sunsetting in 2025. It was adopted in 2020. The process to produce this plan is a multi-year process. We're getting started now, so we can meet that deadline. There are several requirements for the plan itself. It must be multimodal, which means that it must include planning for aviation, bicycle and pedestrian transportation, ferry and water transportation, rail, public transportation, and roadway. And this is not a hierarchy of planning. All of these are treated equally. So we're going to be looking at all of these modes throughout the region. It must be fiscally constrained. And Mike touched on this a little bit. But basically, this means that every single project that's included in this plan has funding identified. So these are projects that can actually get built. This is not a wish list of projects. These are projects with identified funding. We produce this plan 99% in-house. We will be bringing in a consultant to do that fiscal analysis, bringing in an expert to do those 25-year financial projections. They'll be looking at state, federal, and local funding to identify what's available in our area. This plan must have a minimum 20-year planning horizon. We go a little above and beyond and do 25 years. It must adhere to an adopted public involvement policy. All of our public involvement does adhere to our WMPO policy. We actually just refreshed it this January. And it must be created using growth forecasts that are consistent with the latest local land use plans. So this is an important part of this plan as well, because part of the research includes looking into those 10 member jurisdictions, future land use, the planning that's already been done from an urban planning perspective, any type of transportation planning that's already been done. But all the projects must be appropriate and must fit into that network that's already there. So we will be digging into that. We will be working with all of our local planning partners to make sure that the projects that are proposed are appropriate for the good planning that's already been done. So I want to talk a little bit about the importance of this plan and how it actually gets projects built, how it affects the implementation of projects in our area. And it really does this in two ways. The first way is, I mentioned, this is the blueprint. This is the gold standard, the federally mandated transportation plan for our region. So every single transportation project, every person coming into the area doing transportation projects, if that's DOT, if that's Feds, if that's local, they're all going to consult this plan because they want to know what our region is up to for the next 25 years. They want to know that their project is fitting into this blueprint that's already been designed. So the plan will directly influence any projects coming into the area. The second way that this plan influences projects being built is through funding. Every single project that's included in this plan is eligible to compete for state funding. Every single project included in this plan is also eligible to compete for the funding that the WMPO receives annually from the federal government. This year, it was about $5 million. So that's guaranteed funding coming every year. That's funding that's coming from the state that's guaranteed, that's already there. Those funding streams will be looked at during that fiscal analysis portion. So again, being included in this plan is important. The project is recognized as a regional priority if it's in the plan, and it has funding attached. So if this project gets in the plan, it moves that project to the front of the line. This diagram that's shown on your screen shows how the plan interacts with, first, the CTP, which stands for Comprehensive Transportation Plan. That's really a wish list of projects. That's every single project that needs doing in our area. That boils down to the MTP, the Metropolitan Transportation Plan. Those are the projects that actually can get built with funding that exists. And then finally, the TIP, the Transportation Improvement Plan, that's that state funding. So state funding may be able to pay for some of that, some of those identified projects in the MTP. But as I mentioned, there are other funding streams as well, federal and local, and other grants, for instance. If you've ever worked with grants, you know that grantors want to see projects in adopted plans. They want to know that the public has weighed in, and this is a priority. They want to know that there's political support. So again, getting a project in this plan really makes it move to the top of the list. So we've talked a little bit about the plan, its importance. And now I want to talk about what we've been doing and what's coming up with our planning process. So staff have been hard at work behind the scenes since August of last year, preparing for this effort. It is a multi-year effort. It takes almost three and a half years to complete. Currently, we are in the phase, our most public-facing phase. We're convening two different steering committees, which I'll get into in a minute, the CAC, Citizens Advisory Committee, and Metropolitan Transportation Plan Steering Committee. And we're also in conducting our Phase One of Public Outreach. Once we conclude these activities, we'll move into the modal project development. We'll actually be digging into the projects included in the plan, and that financial piece will be applied as well. Once that concludes, we'll move into draft plan development. And then in June of 2025, we'll have that draft plan ready. And we'll go back out to the public in our second and final round of public engagement to get comments on that draft plan. Once we have those comments, we'll finalize the plan, reflecting what we've heard from the public. And then in September '25 through October '25, we'll be presenting that final plan around the community and to our boards. In November of 2025, we'll be seeking plan adoption. So I mentioned we have two steering committees. This is one of the ways that we're making sure that this plan reflects the needs of our community, is by engaging subject matter experts and community members through these steering committees. The first steering committee, the Citizens Advisory Committee, is made up of folks that are connected to their local communities. So these folks have been hand-selected by our board members because they have deep roots in their own communities. And their role is to help guide staff in creating the most robust and diverse public participation process we can possibly do. And they have been hard at work doing that since June. So they'll be convened during Phase One and Phase Two of our public participation processes. The second steering committee, the MTPC, is made up of subject matter experts in the field of transportation, as well as our urban planning partners, as well as public health, emergency management, diversity and inclusion. So we're casting a bit of a wide net, thinking about who this plan touches, who needs to know about this plan, who needs to weigh in. And this is where we're including, for instance, our local planning departments. For New Henneberg County, Rebecca Roth has graciously agreed to participate in the committee. We also have Anna McCray from Emergency Management. I want to go into public outreach a little bit and let you know what we've been doing, and also how citizens can get involved. Again, we are in Phase One of public outreach, which launched October 1st, and will conclude on November 30th. And through that phase, we are collecting data through two main tools. First, we have an online survey that's available in English and Spanish. And we have stakeholder interviews and focus groups that we're conducting as well. So we've been promoting those opportunities quite a bit. We've done six public meetings. We have had ongoing pop-up and outreach events, and we'll continue to do so through the month of November. We've issued two press releases and have another one coming up in November. We have a social media campaign. We've done videos that we've produced. We have a webpage, of course. We're doing email blasts. And then we also have a handout and a poster that we're distributing. So here's just a snapshot of our public meetings. We had 106 attendees and 90 MAP comments. We had a MAP activity, interactive MAP activity at that meeting. We had a map activity, interactive map activity at that meeting, where folks could actually pinpoint where issues were on the map. Just a snapshot of presentations and pop-up events that we have already concluded and that are upcoming. For instance, we'll be at the Festival Latino next month, and we're doing these governing board presentations in the month of October to all of our member jurisdictions. So here is our survey handout. This is our ask. Please take the survey for anyone who hasn't taken it yet. This is the best way that you can let us know about your transportation needs and desires. This is what it looks like, and I just wanted to point out where it can be translated into Spanish. So it's just one click, and the survey is translated into Spanish. This is what it looks like when it's in Spanish. And I want to just briefly show you the kinds of questions that we're asking for anyone who has not taken the survey. So here, this is an interactive portion of the survey, where you drag and drop these coins on the left into the funding buckets where you would spend the money. So we're asking you, if it was up to you, how would you allocate these funds? Would you spend more on public transportation? Would you spend more on road maintenance? What would you do? We're asking about what folks would change. We're looking at their current travel behavior. How are you currently getting around town? How would you like to be getting around town in the future? Do you want to do more walking? Do you want to do more biking? Are there things that prevent you from doing that? Are there obstacles? We're looking at things like resiliency, asking questions about resiliency. How important is it to you that our transportation network can recover quickly from flooding and weather events? Is that something that we need to be paying attention to over the next 25 years? And then finally, we're asking about the future. So things like e-bikes and electric cars, are these are things that are important to our citizens? Our survey includes an interactive map. So you can go in, and you can grab one of these icons on the top, and drop it, drop a pin exactly where you think changes are needed. If your neighborhood needs a sidewalk, this is your time to let us know that. If your neighborhood has potholes, if you have traffic concerns anywhere in the region, please drag and drop. We're going to be looking at all of these comments. We'll be addressing them in the plan. And then finally, we're asking for some demographic information, of course. On the last page of the survey here, there's also a link to our website, as well as our social media. We're using that demographic information to make sure that we're reaching our entire region. So we're looking at that regularly to see who has answered the survey, who is missing. And then we're making targeted engagement efforts to communities that are missing. So here's our ask. Not only take the survey, but if you can, please help us promote it. Share it on social media, hang a poster, email. These are all of our social handles. New Hanover County staff has been very helpful already in helping us get the word out, and we look forward to our future partnership with them. We're also running a contest. If you like to win things, you can share on social media with the hashtag #NavigatingChange2050. Each month, we're giving away a transportation-related prize. Our October prize is two tickets for a boat ride on the Cape Fear River. If you need more information, please visit our website, wmpo.org. That is the home for all of the information I've shared today, plus much more. And that concludes my update. This is my contact information. I am the project manager on this plan. I'd be happy to speak with any citizens if they have specific questions. Encourage you to reach out to me, and I'm happy to answer any questions this morning.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
Yes, sir.
Vanessa, thank you for the wonderful update. On the survey, I noticed on the budget allocation page, and maybe there's more to it, and I just simply didn't see it yet, because I have not taken the survey yet now, but I will. You know, I'm very clever. I love the way you basically give, you know, people an opportunity to spend a certain amount of money, and where would you put that money? It causes people to stop and think about budget allocation. I noticed you didn't have a bridge on there as an item. Is there one on one of the other pages?
Great question. Let me go back and see what we do have. I believe we may have rolled in replacing or updating existing infrastructure on one of these. So let's see. I can't read it from here, but I believe it says maintain or improve roads, which would fall into that category. If you look at the very top of that box, there's a little "i" in a circle. And if you click that on the live survey, it'll give you a list of examples. There may be infrastructure included on that example.
I see. It would be interesting, though, if you had one directly related to the bridge. I have a feeling you'd see a lot of people dumping all their money into that.
Sure. We do have a comment bubble on this. If there's something that you're interested in that's not listed, you can always add that. And then when you do the interactive map, if the bridge is your concern, you can drop a pin right on it as well.
Good idea. Thank you. Also, on the next slide, if you can go to that too, it says, you know, what would you change? I think a couple of questions that came to my mind, and again, maybe there's just more to it that we don't see on this one slide. But a simple question, again, have you crossed the Cape Fear Memorial Bridge? And how many people would respond to that? The second one, have you waited for a train to pass? Going to the number of, you know, train passages we have in there. I think that'd be interesting data to get from a survey. Just a couple of other thoughts as we went through it. Overall, thank you very much for the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the Presentation of the Workforce Housing Services Program: Recommendation for Funding Allocation and Consideration of Resolution Approving Funding Allocation. Mr. McLamie?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you for the time to present the funding recommendations for the Workforce Housing Services Program. Joined with me today are Rebecca Roth, our Director of Planning and Land Use, and Rachel LaCoe, our Community Services, our Community Planning Supervisor. This is the second year of your five-year commitment to invest $15 million toward workforce housing. This investment is in addition to other resources. The county has invested in workforce housing through infrastructure, non-county agency funding, and the donation of lots through our property conveyance policy. The criteria and priorities for this funding cycle were developed based on the findings of the Joint County and City Comprehensive Study and Survey to create an immediate impact on New Hanover County residents. The study, updated earlier this year, reported an estimated housing gap of 16,875 for-sale units, and a gap of 12,147 for-rent units over the next 10 years. The framework was designed to address the community's housing needs by increasing the supply of units, preserving our workforce housing stock, and increasing residents' access to those homes, with the highest focus this cycle on increasing the number of units. The financial feasibility of each proposal, the development quality of any construction projects, as well as the capacity and experience of the development team were evaluated. Major site eligibility criteria are: the site must be zoned for proposed development, preliminary site plan approval, if applicable, and the site must not be impacted by environmental problems, including flood hazards. Additionally, projects were prioritized for the second round of funding based on their ability to break ground prior to July of next year. Leverage of funding, a period of affordability that exceeds 15 years, target area median income in the range of 60% to 120% AMI, and the acceptance of housing choice vouchers. Regarding the application process, a virtual information session for community outreach was held on July 10th. The RFP was issued July 17th with a due date of August 4th. A cross-functional team of county staff, along with members of the Workforce Housing Advisory Committee, met on August 30th and September 11th to review the proposals and to make recommendations that are presented to you this morning. The virtual information session was a process enhancement from year one. The session was recorded and available to anyone who could not attend. Likewise, applicants were given opportunities to clarify budgeting and programming questions. Those clarifications are reflected in the final request. After the recommendations were finalized, staff reached out to all applicants to discuss their proposal. Seven proposals were received for a total of $6.6 million in funding requests for the construction, rehabilitation, and rent assistance for 547 total units and households. Blue Ridge Atlantic Development, Cape Fear Habitat for Humanity, New Beginning Christian Church, Warm NC were ranked as the best qualified proposals based upon viability and priorities. These projects, a mixture of new construction, rehabilitation of existing units, and rent assistance have been recommended for funding consideration of $2,972,000. This investment in workforce housing will serve 274 households in New Hanover County. All four projects are recommended as grants. Staff will be finalizing details of the grant conditions following approval of the funding resolution. Blue Ridge Atlantic Development is requesting $600,000 for the residents at Canopy Point. This 72-unit senior housing development has received low-income housing tax credits and is currently under construction. Funding would replace contingency funds that were depleted to correct unsuitable soil conditions, to keep the project compliant with tax credit financing requirements, and pay for facility improvements to make the project more durable and resilient. Cape Fear Habitat for Humanity has requested a $1 million grant for water and sewer infrastructure in Haven Place, the site for construction of 35 single-family units in an unincorporated area of the county. Haven Place would increase housing stock and provide immediate homeownership opportunities to workforce families. New Beginning Christian Church is requesting a $500,000 grant to expand the existing Healthy Opportunities Pilot Program with their rental assistance program. This project will serve 127 families by providing rental assistance stabilization and self-help wraparound services with a focus on supporting families toward housing stability. Warm is requesting an $872,000 grant to repair 40 units with the goal of retaining workforce housing stock. Repairs would include flooring, plumbing, appliances, stairs, roof repair and replacement, HVAC, and ADA accessibility repairs for owner-occupied homes. The following proposals were not recommended for funding at this time. Cape Fear Collective has requested $673,900 for their electrical improvements and income verification project. The project would focus on electrical rewires and repairs of 75 units scattered across the city of Wilmington with clusters in the north side and south side. Information was not provided to verify household incomes, and long-term affordability could not be guaranteed at this point. LMN Advisors is requesting $1.5 million for construction financing for 150 to 200 workforce, single-family, or multifamily housing units. A potential site was not identified within New Hanover County. Staff reached out to the applicant to share information about the funding eligibility and criteria. Wilmington Realtors Foundation is requesting $1.5 million for the water and sewer infrastructure for Pearson Point. This project includes the construction of 48 new units located on Carolina Beach Road. The project is still in the design and fundraising stage. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this concludes my presentation. Ms. Roth, Ms. LaCoe, and I are available if you have questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Theo, thanks very much for that update and for the hard work of the entire committee and our staff to make this happen. One thing I did note also on the Warm allotment, a key component is allowing money for aging-in-place projects, which are really important. And I know it's just a catchphrase, but the reality is it keeps people in their existing homes and allows them to stay. And there's no better bang for your buck than keeping somebody and allowing them to stay in their home. I just wanted to add that to that. I see JC's here and smiling. So I'm correct on that, right? Yes, thank you. Also, Theo, to the program itself, could you describe what the follow-up or the audit process is? We give the money out, you know, to all these projects, which are terrific. It's exactly what this was designed to do, $3 million per year, a $15 million commitment over five years. What do we do to make sure that the projects are on time and that the money's being spent the way that it's been proposed?
The Lattec projects will have come with a state-mandated audit and follow-up procedures, which are fairly stringent. On our local projects, we will be working with finance and management on developing the audit requirements and the compliance. And Rachel may want to add to that.
So in the funding agreement, that's where the performance metrics would come into play and how that all plays out, similar to the non-county agency, how they have that laid out. That's kind of the idea. So we'll work with that on the funding agreement side.
So we'll get a midway check and then an end-of-the-year check to make sure that the money has been spent.
Correct.
Correctly. And will there be extensions allowed, or is that on a case-by-case basis?
We will work with finance on the details of that, how that would work. But Warm is a two-year program. The other programs are all one year. So I guess it'll be more on a case-by-case if there's a compelling reason. But if there's any major changes, we'd come and talk about that as part of the funding agreement.
And in the worst-case scenario, if the money has not been spent or spent in the way that has been laid out, do we have a clawback feature?
We will put that in the agreement.
Thank you.
Just a couple of questions. I noticed that one of the requests included inspection fees. Do we look at possibly waiving inspection fees instead of granting money in those instances?
We will work with our inspections and permitting department for where it's appropriate of those fees. And we'll come back with that information. But we haven't had those discussions at this point.
I didn't know if certain organizations had asked to have... I didn't know if they, if certain organizations had asked to have inspection fees waived in light of affordable housing projects.
We haven't had any in our applicants. They've all budgeted for the inspections fees at this time. So there haven't been any requests to waive them at this time.
And, and just another question. I want to bring up the Wilmington Realtors Foundation. I know they've talked about that for many years and, and I've had some discussions with Commissioner Barfield about that as well. Part of the reason they can't get off the ground is because of the infrastructure in that area. And I wonder, do we have any plans to extend infrastructure down Carolina Beach Road with all the rezonings and developments that we're seeing that we could connect C F P U A into that area?
Commissioner Pierce, at this point in time, we don't have any identified projects or partnerships with C F P U A. I do know that Cape Fear Realtors Foundation has submitted additional grant funding requests for that infrastructure project. If those are not allocated, that's something we could definitely look into. One of the other key components to the Realtors Foundation project is just making sure they get through that initial T R C preliminary site plan approval. We have had conversations with members of the Realtors Foundation about that set of next steps, which could happen over the next couple of months during the timeframe when they're hearing more about whether or not that other grant application was approved. And at that point in time, we can determine whether or not there's an opportunity for us to partner with that.
And would we, are we helping them in that grant process? I understand. I heard something about applying for a grant for that project.
So in terms of a formal request, we were not asked to present any sort of support or, or letter of support on, on their behalf. But we do see them as a partner. We are excited about this. There aren't a lot of opportunities for finding affordable owner-occupied housing opportunities. Habitat's a really good model, but we are interested in exploring other models. And so we will look to see, once we know the results of their additional grant request and as they move through our T R C process and there's a little bit more certainty as to what some of the other costs related to the project are, how we can best be a partner moving forward.
Got you. And just one last comment. Just for the record, I do think it's an advantage to New Hanover County to extend that infrastructure through that area. We know that's going to be a developing corridor through there. And what we can do, whether we partner with developers or have them continue to put in that infrastructure that it goes all the way down to the southern end of the county, I think is an advantage to us.
As a further comment on the Wilmington Realtors Foundation project, I do think that there is a lot of potential there. There are a lot of great folks that are attached to that project. And I hope that we'll continue to work alongside them to help them get to the position where we might be able to make a recommendation for them in the future.
That is our intent as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Rebecca, I guess you hear from our board the importance of that one project in particular for us. You know, for me, it's good to see a good mix of rentals, but also homes that will be purchased. For me, the purchase option allows folks to establish generational wealth, the accumulation of increased property value that someone could pass on to their families down the road. And that's of great importance to me. Although I will support, you know, the list is here. As I mentioned before, I was concerned about the Canopy Point for a number of reasons. The first reason, the fact that they came before our board to get rezoned. And you and your staff and our county team put a lot of effort and resources into going through the whole process. The planning board, the planning staff coming before our board of county commissioners, only in my opinion, to waste our time to go to the city because the city had a part of money. And then the request of voluntary annexation in the city. You know, my feelings truly are that they should go to the city for these resources and not the county. We've seen a number of developments where folks can't get what they want from the county. So they will go to the city for a voluntary annexation, which creates these bubbles in our community. And it creates a challenge when it comes to fire and, and police services as well as we've got to figure out how we have, you know, an agreement with the city and the county to provide those services to those areas as opposed to them being in the unincorporated parts of the county. I'm concerned about the affordability of the units off of Middle Sound Loop Road. Although they are applying for a low-income tax credit, you know, my, my question is really going to be what will be the price points in that particular area. I don't see those as being affordable, but that's to be determined. I say, thank you.
Rebecca, what kind of obligation if, well, let's use Cape Habitat for Humanity. When they build someone a house, can that person sell that house in six months?
I'll let Rachel explain. She knows a little bit more about the details. But their model does have provisions in place that help with that long-term affordability feature.
Yes, there are deed restrictions on those properties. And Habitat has first right of refusal to purchase it back to ensure that affordability long-term. But they do put that in, in how they service it.
And, and that was my point I was going to make is when, when you build an affordable house and there are no restrictions on it and that person sells it, then it's not an affordable house anymore, right?
Correct. And so that's why a model like Habitat has that built in.
Well, are these other builders, the three that y'all didn't choose, L M N or something like that, they were going to build houses for sale? Would they be subjected to that?
They did not provide their business plan or model, and that was part of the reason that they're not being recommended. They did not have that all laid out. As we work with them for future applications, that will be questions that we'll be asking.
I don't, I don't have any problem with anybody having ownership. I want everybody to own a house. But I don't want somebody to, to get in on something like this and then sell it and make a lot of money and take a affordable house off the market.
And that's why period of affordability is one of our priorities to ensure that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt a resolution approving the funding allocations.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. Chairman, if I might just make a comment. I don't think anyone needs to come up for it. But it really has been impressive at any number of moments and times during the time that I've been here to see how well our staff goes along to help people get to where they want to go. And I really just encourage those folks that might want to apply for something like this in the future, get up with our staff as soon as you can. They'll help you figure out what you need to do. Don't hesitate. That's what they like to do. That's what they're good at. And I've really liked seeing it in this situation.
Thank you. Okay, presentation of the American Rescue Plan Framework by Mr. Tim Buckland.
Well, good morning, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair and Commissioners. Thank you for giving Eric and I this opportunity this morning to provide you with an update on your American Rescue Plan Framework. You know, it's hard for me to believe, Commissioners, that it's been two and a half years since you adopted your very first framework to guide the use of these funds. As Eric and I have done in the past, I'll share program details with you and then Eric will paint a financial picture. I've said this before, but I hope you agree that it bears repeating that New Hanover County moved very quickly and deliberately with Commissioners adopting the county's initial framework to guide the use of the roughly forty-five million dollars in direct federal aid just three weeks after the American Rescue Plan Act was signed, was signed by the President. It was never the county's intentions to allow the, these funds to just sit idly in a bank account. And to my knowledge, I've said this before, you were the first elected body in the United States to adopt a formal framework to guide the use of funds. And you have focused the, most of these funds on recovering from the health and financial impacts of the COVID-nineteen pandemic. The framework is something of a living document and you've revised it numerous times in the past, either to adapt to federal guidelines or to meet new priorities identified by the board. Indeed, the framework in front of you today is version thirty-three. And finally, the funds have to be obligated by December twenty-twenty-four and then fully spent by December twenty-twenty-six. Because you acted so quickly, many of your programs have already been completed. You provided direct financial assistance to more than one hundred small businesses and nearly thirty nonprofit organizations, many of whom reported back that the cash infusion served as something of a lifeline to keep them operational as we recovered from the pandemic. The framework helped households as well. Three hundred and sixteen households provided payments to catch up on mortgages that were in arrears. And in a partnership with the City of Wilmington, four hundred ninety-five customers of the Cape Fear Public Utility Authority were able to catch up on water bills that were in arrears, avoiding cutoff of water service. Water and sewer infrastructure for the Eden Village Affordable Housing Project and for two Habitat for Humanity affordable housing neighborhoods have been constructed. A total of ninety-seven households with school-aged children and who qualify for economic assistance through the Department of Social Services received assistance to be connected to broadband. That service is starting to wind down with the first customers leaving the program next month after two years of service. We expect the final customers to leave the service in January of twenty-twenty-five, though our I T department has committed to helping customers find assistance if they need it through federal and state sources of broadband aid. Some initiatives to address senior and health support services have also either ended or become part of the county's continuation budget. Ended programs include positions for housing counseling and to manage the emergency rental assistance program. Programs continuing in the county budget include mental health services for seniors, school nurses, virtual outreach services, and a health educator position. A program to provide scholarships for providers of infant and toddler mental health attracted just one participant. So Smart Start has repurposed some of those funds into provide, to provide resiliency training and classroom support services. And in twenty-twenty-one, the board chose to recognize county employees for their work, not just in responding to the pandemic, but in continuing to provide essential county services. Much of the work involved in your framework continues. One successful program put in place to get unemployed or underemployed people back to work has been a job training program administered by Step Up Wilmington. You might recall that the program pays participants to entice them to complete their training and then Step Up provides further job placement assistance. The original goal was to have Step Up provide assistance and training to as many as two hundred people. Commissioners, I'm pleased to report that Step Up has exceeded all expectations. To date, a total of five hundred twenty-one people have enrolled in the job training programs and four hundred twenty have completed them. And here's the best part. Keep in mind that original goal was two hundred. There are three hundred fifty-six people placed in full-time employment through this program. Further, Step Up has launched an enhanced program called Career Up. In a partnership with Cape Fear Community College, the program provides on-the-job training and career-specific classes with the goal of having five hundred people in full-time employment and at living wages to create and sustain long-term employment. Pictured on this slide are interns with the Film Partnership of North Carolina constructing Halloween sets. So far, the program has enrolled thirty interns. The program, funded with five hundred thousand dollars initially, was intended to provide interns with on-the-job training to prepare them to work in the local film industry. But when productions were halted because of the strikes by the Writers and Film Actors Guilds, the program pivoted to hire current film industry workers to provide classroom-style, hands-on training. So far, a total of twelve local film professionals have been hired. And according to Susie Hamilton, president of the Film Partnership of North Carolina, this program's success has led them to request additional funds of one hundred thousand dollars to expand the program with the goal of hiring an additional fifty trainers and enrolling an additional thirty-five interns. Numerous programs continue to be funded with American Rescue Plan dollars, including providing mental health services in schools, meals provided by the Senior Resource Center, the pandemic operations team, Port City United, and programs working to address homelessness. As I mentioned earlier, Smart Start has repurposed forty-six thousand dollars, originally intended for the scholarships, to provide training and support for childcare classrooms. In the realm of affordable housing, the board has previously approved one point nine million dollars in gap financing to Starway Village and two weeks ago approved using five hundred thousand dollars in interest earnings from A R P deposits to provide additional financing to help close a gap brought on by rising lending rates. And finally, a gap rental assistance program, which will wind down next year, has provided rental assistance to one hundred twenty-four households. And with that, I will turn things over to Eric.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks, Tim. This slide is a, is a comprehensive accounting of the county's A R P funds. Arthur Lane and Maria Stanfus, we said hello to earlier, do a great job of keeping very detailed records here that would undergo any audit. The left-hand column reflects the most recently approved program budgets, which you approved on April the third, two thousand twenty-three. The next column to the right shows the adjustments that we are proposing to you today, which will be discussed in more detail in just a moment. The column title, Proposed New Program Budget, reflects the adjusted total program budgets if today's changes are approved. And the last column shows how much we've spent to date and reflects a total of thirty-four point four million. The difference in the last two columns is eleven point one million and represents the amounts left to spend. And as Tim noted, as required by the American Rescue Plan, we expect to spend the remaining funds by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Now to discuss today's recommended changes. As this slide indicates, the first program with a change is within housing. The amount's just fifty dollars. It just represents a fine-tuning of final cost. Next is the Business and Employment Assistance category. As Tim discussed, following the film industry strike, Susie Hamilton with the Film Partnership of North Carolina teamed up with local film professionals to provide hands-on training to film interns. To date, the program has enrolled thirty interns with a concentration from historically underserved populations. Ms. Hamilton has requested an additional one hundred thousand dollars that will enable her, enable her to expand this training to an additional thirty-five interns. County staff has met with Ms. Hamilton and recommends approval of this additional funding. Under the physical and mental health category, we have proposed, proposed adjustments to eight programs that nets to a, to a reduction of A R P spending of a million one hundred fifty-four thousand. The first adjustment relates to community resource coordinators that work in the schools. The cost for this program was estimated at the program inception. At this point, the program is fully built out with twenty-two coordinators. And we have contracts in place that take us through June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four with an A R P funding date, final funding date of twelve thirty-one twenty-four. Thus, we have much more visibility and a better estimate on the ultimate cost of this program. And we estimate that the total cost will come in one thousand, one million and fifty thousand dollars below the initial estimate. The next program noted is mental health in schools whereby the county has ensured that students at each public school have access to mental health counselors. As a result of salary adjustments and other pay adjustments, we estimate that an additional two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars is needed to fund this initiative through its, through its targeted final A R P funding date of June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-four. The next four programs listed are mental health for seniors, virtual outreach, school nurses, and health educator. Each of these programs concluded their A R P funding at June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three. And the amounts indicated on this slide ranging from nine thousand dollars to forty-nine thousand dollars were the unspent funds. As Tim noted previously, each of these programs continued and were assumed by the general fund budget in fiscal year two thousand twenty-four. The next program shown is transportation for the Senior Resource Center. As this program began, staff identified an available grant that was able to provide funding for all of fiscal year twenty-two. And therefore earmarked A R P funds were not expended as early as expected. Accordingly, we recommend that the program budget be reduced by a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The last program in this category is infant and toddler mental health scholarships and classroom support. As Tim mentioned, demand for this program was less than originally anticipated. While a portion of this funding was repurposed, staff estimates the program budget can be reduced by fifty thousand dollars. Under the category, infrastructure, at the last update in April, the board approved a seventy-five thousand, seventy-five thousand dollar allocation at the request of the New Hanover County Schools to conduct a demographics and facilities study. We were subsequently notified by the schools that they had identified an alternative funding source for that study and thus we were able to reverse that allocation without spending it. The net results of the proposed adjustments is in addition to the A R P reserves of a million one hundred twenty-nine thousand eight seventy-three. As this slide indicates, when the one point one million dollars in new reserves is added to the prior unallocated reserves, we now have a million one hundred thirty-four thousand and fifty-three dollars in unallocated A R P funds. Additionally, we have a total of six hundred and nineteen thousand nine seventy-seven in unspent program income and interest earnings, which results in a total of a thousand, I'm sorry, a million seven hundred and fifty-four thousand oh forty in unspent funds related to A R P. Staff is currently evaluating potential uses for these funds and we will have recommendations for you in the near future for their expenditure. That concludes my remarks.
Anybody have any questions?
Eric, thanks for the rundown. And Tim, thanks for the excellent report. The one question I had had to do with the infant and toddler classroom support. We repurposed forty-six thousand dollars for training supplies, support services in preschool settings, which is terrific, obviously well-needed. Will we try to fold that into our continuing budget? Or is there funding to continue with that support?
As of right now, that was just a one-time request.
Coming through Smart Start?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right. We'll see about a further request, because it's, I know it was, it's really needed, so thank you.
Any ones?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt the revised framework.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you, guys. Okay, presentation of Western Bank Planning Study and Recommendations for Next Steps, Mr. Rebecca Roth.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. I'm glad to be here this morning to present to you the findings of our staff study to identify next steps for policies related to land use on the Western Bank. Our intent today is just to present to you our findings and recommendations for those next steps to get your authorization to move forward with the project. This is just the initial step in the process, and a series of public hearings and discussions with you and the planning board and other stakeholders would occur over the coming months before anything would be officially adopted. The Western Bank area has been defined as the land in unincorporated New Hanover County between the Cape Fear Memorial Bridge and the Isabel Holmes Bridge across the river from downtown Wilmington, and it's made up of a relatively small number of parcels that are generally privately owned. It includes land on Eagles Island adjacent to the battleship, the peninsula, the convergence of the Cape Fear and Northeast Cape Fear Rivers known as Point Peter, and an existing industrial parcel across from Live Oak Bank Pavilion and the old Wilmington Shipyard site just south of the Isabel Holmes Bridge. Currently, these projects or these parcels are zoned for commercial, industrial, and a mix of uses. And our comprehensive plan incorporates a vision that was established in the early two thousands to have development in this area mirror what is across the river in downtown. So two years ago, two projects were submitted to planning staff. A By Right Hotel and Spa on Eagles Island was submitted for Technical Review Committee consideration. That's the one shown on the bottom there. And a text amendment and associated development proposal for a mixed-use project on Point Peter was submitted for Planning Board and Board of Commissioner public hearings. These were the first submittals made for parcels on the Western Bank for several years, and the information that was presented as part of the public hearing process for the Point Peter projects raised question about the current vision outlined in the comprehensive plan, specifically information related to current sunny day flooding and indications that water levels in the area were rising at a rate higher than previously anticipated. Since those project submittals, which have either not moved forward or have been withdrawn, the board has been holding a series of work sessions to determine the direction of how to move forward in this area. In spring two thousand and twenty-two, staff provided additional information on known risks related to flooding and what might be feasible from a development standpoint. Last summer, we outlined a variety of development scenarios and their potential impacts based on that information on risk, and the board requested an additional study to inform how to best move forward. Upon determining at this point in time, no discrete technical study is really possible without the property owners' participation that would really provide much certainty as to what's advisable in the area. So we move forward with your authorization this past spring with this planning study to inform the next steps in the process, and that's what I'm outlining for you today. So the first step in this planning study was really just a high-level analysis of development feasibility in the area, taking zoning off the table. This is something that we have presented to you at a high level in the past. The question has always been, what is the highest and best use for this area? And generally, from an assessment standpoint, if you're looking at assessing the value of a property, you take into account zoning. But we know since that's part of the conversation that we're having on our end, what would it actually look like if you don't take zoning into account? Because there are some regulatory standards in this area that apply outside of our local regulations. Taking those other legal considerations into account, those other technical considerations, we then did take a look to see what is feasible from an engineering, from a technical standpoint, and then the resulting financial implications. I will take just a couple of minutes to go over the most pertinent of those findings. More information is outlined in the full Western Bank Study Report, and that's going to be posted on our website after this morning's presentation. So the Western Bank Study area is subject to the State Coastal Area Management Act, CAMA, and rules and policies of the North Carolina Coastal Resources Commission, both of which are enforced by the State Division of Coastal Management. Water-dependent structures such as bulkheads, piers, and docking facilities, and boat ramps are subject to these rules. It's likely that development in this area would be subject to at least some level of CAMA permitting. In addition to review from multiple state agencies to determine if additional standards would apply, the CAMA regulations that apply to the study area include setbacks and buffers from the normal high-water line boundary or mean-high water. The normal high-water line is not static, so verified field surveying of the line from which these buffer supplies is only good for one year unless you have an actual CAMA permit in place. And the most recent information that we have shown on these maps in front of you hasn't been confirmed by the Division of Coastal Management staff per our conversations with them and may actually be located further inland, impacting the amount of buildable area on the sites. In addition, it is uncertain, but unlikely, that CAMA permitting would allow for the types of hardened structures currently used in downtown Wilmington to reduce flooding and erosion concerns. The exact impact of the CAMA regulations on these properties is uncertain at this point in time, and it wouldn't be able to be determined by Division of Coastal Management staff until they have a full site plan in front of them that's necessary for their full CAMA review process. Full assurances of whether a project would meet those CAMA permitting requirements isn't really possible before we take our next steps. It would take an actual permit application to them in order to know more in this area. So a chance does exist that an approved conditional rezoning project may not end up being legally feasible. At this point, we don't even know whether the projects from two years ago would be possible from a CAMA standpoint because they have not gone through that full CAMA process. In addition, the Western Bank Study area, along with portions of downtown Wilmington, it is located within the FEMA AE flood zone, a zone with a modeled one percent or greater annual chance of flooding. The county's current regulatory flood insurance rate maps in this area, which were adopted in two thousand and eighteen, are based on current risk modeling using the existing conditions data available at that time. Currently, it does appear that there is more frequent flooding. So we've gone out there, of course, on site visits a number of times, and there are people who are familiar with this area, but we did go and take a look at the properties both on Eagles Island and on the Northern Bank the day prior to Hurricane Adalia because it was a king high tide, the day after Adalia came through overnight, and then the day after that, when we started to see the impacts of some of the extreme precipitation that had occurred upriver. And you can see here that by that third day, at least on the Eagles Island portion, there was water sheeting across the roadway, and I had to turn around. I wasn't even able to visit the battleship site or some of these adjacent sites. What we're seeing is that a lot of the sheet flooding comes off of the Cape Fear River through some of the marsh areas, and there's potentially the possibility for that occurring closer to the Cape Fear Memorial Bridge as well, because there are some lower-lying areas there as well. And of course, this is the developable parcel on this piece of property, and so you would have to use both of those roadways in order to access that site. On the Northern Bank, there is less visible flooding, especially from the roadway. The roadway itself does not flood. You can see, as you get to some marshier areas closer to Point Peter, that there is some flooding that seems to be coming across from the Northeast Cape Fear River there in all three scenarios. But there are some higher areas where it's not really visible that there's flooding at this point in time. A lot of this is due to the topography of the area. The areas circled here are some of the uplands that are on these areas. Right now, we have a base flood elevation in this area of nine feet. A lot of even the upland areas are between eight to twelve feet. And you can see the stars show the places with some of the highest elevations. This is lower than what you would see for most of downtown Wilmington across the river from some of these properties. You're looking more at twelve-foot elevations. I think the offices for the Chamber of Commerce are some of the areas that probably are a little bit on the lower end. So in addition to the regulatory considerations, development on the Western Bank would also be influenced by necessary infrastructure, including roadway access. As we already talked about, there's potential flooding here and here on Eagles Island. But in addition, the Isabel Holmes Bridge flyover that's slated for construction in two thousand and twenty-nine will impact the study area. Basically, it'll be taking away the northern access to Point Harbor Road. So the only access would be here, the driveway to the Sheriff's Department site and the southern access to Point Harbor Drive. Once the Isabel Holmes project is in place, there will be no left-turn movements allowed. And so folks would have to either make a right turn out and just proceed in that direction, or they would have to travel some distance in order to reach a U-turn. Over the past fifteen years or so, we have had two traffic impact analyses conducted for projects on the Northern Bank, and both of them included that restricted left turn, but it also required the installation of a loop road so that regardless of which side of four-twenty-one you're trying to access, you would be able to take a left or you would be able to go into the other movement, go either north or south, depending on which of the exits you used. This last time that this was proposed, NCDOT was looking at, from my understanding, making that a private investment in order to reduce the risk in terms of future roadway maintenance for the current public road. In addition to the transportation impacts, of course, anything but the most minimal of uses would require extension of water and sewer utilities now that there are utilities available on four-twenty-one that the county helped support several years ago. There is a little bit more possibility to extend them financially than there was previously. In the end, from the information presented as part of the recent development proposals and gathered by staff, the legal feasibility of the project would depend on site-specific CAMA review, which would not be conducted prior to any comprehensive plan amendment or conditional rezoning decision. The parameters for that review do take into account changing conditions, so the Western Bank parcels might become less developable over time if that water line is moving. Development on the Western Bank is also technically feasible from an engineering perspective. Concerns related to current flooding, including those of roadways, can be mitigated, and public water and sewer can be extended to serve the properties. The cost of those engineering solutions, in addition to the cost of the required permitting review periods, would likely be extensive, and financial feasibility of a project would depend on the income generated by it and the return on investment period required by the developer. So even as much as we have learned over the past few years about the potential for development on the Western Bank, including the projects that were submitted back in two thousand and twenty-one, there is still uncertainty around how likely it is that this land could be developed and what that development would look like, even if you take zoning considerations out of the equation. Uncertainty also remains regarding the future risk of flooding. NOAA models indicate that water levels will rise over the coming decades. That rise could be as much as three point two eight feet by two thousand and eighty, using the identified local scenario for our area, but these are just high-level models. NOAA says itself that this is not supposed to be used for regulatory purposes. They are not conducted to that level of specificity. But we have also seen an increase in water levels based on the NOAA tide gauge data, which the readings of the past five years circled there are higher than the trend lines would have indicated. In order to identify next steps in this type of situation, when we have so much uncertainty about what the future will look like, staff conducted uncertainty and risk analyses in order to kind of backcast, to determine what we should be doing now to prepare regardless of what this looks like in the future. First, we identified four exploratory scenarios of what might occur in this area, given potential variability and intensity of both future development and of future flooding. We then assessed each scenario for levels of risk for vulnerable populations, populations with more resources, private investments, public investments, natural resources, and historic and cultural amenities, based on a framework developed this past year by a staff resiliency working group that was made up of representatives from Planning, Emergency Management, Engineering, Soil and Water Diversity and Equity and Strategy. The Risk Tolerance Framework identifies when risk is recommended to be avoided, mitigated, or borne for both current known levels of risk and future uncertain levels of risk. For instance, when it comes to more of our underserved and vulnerable populations, we would want to make sure that regardless of whether or not we're looking at current conditions or future risks, that we're avoiding risk to these populations as much as possible because they have fewer resources when it comes to dealing with with risk. And there is a greater likelihood that public monies would need to support their ability to adapt to those risks. Populations with resources, however, we would be more likely to mitigate risk. This is pretty much what we already do when it comes to residential development within a flood zone, where we require that you be elevated beyond the base flood elevation. We have additional parameters in place. Our ordinance currently limits the amount of residential density in these areas, so we try to mitigate the risk as much as possible. But living in a coastal community, people put beach houses on the beach. They like to have homes on the water. So allowing them to bear some of that risk, those who may have the resources to be able to do so, is something that we have done in the past. For private investments, we would recommend mitigating risk that's current and allowing them to bear future risks. When it comes to things like public investments, when it comes to natural resources, and when it comes to historic and cultural amenities, we're trying to strike a balance between making sure that we are protecting the taxpayer dollars, but we are allowing for the enjoyment and use of properties that can potentially be amenities. Activities identified that would allow the county to prepare for a spectrum of potential development scenarios while mitigating or avoiding risk comprise comprehensive plan amendments, regulatory changes, and future partnerships and projects. An update to the comprehensive plan to make sure owners and the wider community are aware of the risks in this area, as well as the fact that as long as these are privately-owned parcels, there is the potential that there's going to be some development. The ordinance could be updated to allow for uses with the most minimal of impacts, so property owners can be able to reasonably use their land, but also to establish standards and processes of what would be required if higher-impact uses were requested to mitigate public risk, such as the ongoing maintenance of infrastructure and emergency service considerations. The basic idea would be to shift the cost burden from the public side to the private side if future development would occur. But we would also need to take into account that even if the land is not developed heavily in this area in the future, there is still likely site contamination that may require public assistance to mitigate so natural resources are not impacted. There are grant opportunities that we could engage in. I think actually what is going to the City of Wilmington's council tomorrow night because they have done this type of activity in the past, working with property owners to mitigate any sort of brownfields contamination on a site. And one of the key recommendations we also outlined in our comprehensive plan update framework was our need to collect data so that we can determine when our existing policies and strategies would need to be updated. In speaking with Roger Hsu and Dr. Larry Kahoon with UNCW, we have been able to identify potential monitoring studies that would allow us to start collecting the data that we need to identify when conditions have changed enough to trigger updates on our end. So we would be able to modify as conditions change. We do recommend that we proceed at this point for more of a public conversation, working on the update to the comprehensive plan and the unified development ordinance. These processes would allow the concepts presented at this meeting to be fleshed out in more detail and would entail a series of public hearings where members of the public and other stakeholders could provide information and participate. Comprehensive plan updates are anticipated to include at this point a specific riverfront area place type and development tier. We don't have another place type that makes sense for this high-visibility, high-challenge area. Implementation strategies related to development- Implementation strategies related to development agreements, hoping to shift that risk from the public side to the private side, as well as the brownfields programs. Really articulating the environmental constraints to make sure that anybody who's involved with development or who owns property on the Western Bank is aware of some of the public conversations we've been having. And then outlining those monitoring studies so we can adjust if needed. As far as the GDO amendment, this would likely result in a new riverfront-specific zoning district. Again, we don't currently have a zoning district in place that would make sense for this area. Even our riverfront mixed-use district has particular uses and development types allowed that may no longer be appropriate or desired by this board. We would probably want to limit uses that were allowed by right, but also outlining what process folks would have to go to to request a higher-intensity use from this board, as well as site design and architectural standards based on what is devised in that plan amendment. We would likely end up having a new integrated mixed-use. Right now, the only way to get to that type of project, generally seen with the first floor, retailer office, and then residential above, the only way we can do that now is through a rezoning or a particular type of zoning district. It might be useful to spell this out in our ordinance for other districts, as well as this riverfront area. And then outlining provisions for non-conforming uses. We are not traditionally in the business of trying to make it harder for existing businesses to stay in business. We do know that there is business out there now, and we want to make sure as long as it meets certain standards, it's able to do what it needs to do. This would likely end up with a staff-led rezoning to apply the new district to the ground. If we wait on property owners to request it, we have to make sure it's attractive to them, and if we're wanting to limit uses, it would have to be through a staff-led initiative. We are requesting your authorization to move forward with refining the comprehensive plan amendment concepts, taking into consideration any feedback and direction that you provided to us this morning. The first step in the process would to be to refine those comprehensive plan concepts so they can be presented to the planning board before moving through the public hearing process. Once there's clarity on where we are going with the amendment to the comprehensive plan, then we would flesh out the unified development ordinance standards that would be needed to implement that. The process would take a few months and would include multiple public hearings before anything is formally adopted. I thank you for your time this morning. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have or take any direction or feedback that you might have as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Rebecca, thank you so much, and thank you for the conversations we've already had surrounding this. My concerns about this are several. The first, though, in primary, is, you know, using the RFMX existing zoning district, the riverfront mixed-use, as a model for our basic or our basis from which to move forward on as we continue the discussions. And the main reason for that is that, it's my understanding, that that would leave the door open in discussions for conditional zoning requests for structures that are up to 170 feet tall, as is in the RFMX right now. I'm really uncomfortable leaving that door open at this early stage before we have what I feel are, you know, the specific studies, two of which you outlined, that I know here. We've, just from the two hearings we've had, and I know two of my fellow commissioners here did not have the advantage of having those, being present for those hearings. But what we did hear, and you've outlined very nicely in here, some of the volatility of the, of what's happening with the river, especially the two rivers, Northeast and the Cape Fear River, and the erosion that is happening, and then combined with the increase in, you know, in water, sea level rise and how it affects the Cape Fear River. One of those studies would also flesh out the effects of compound flooding, which we know exists, but so far have not been identified in the discussions that are happening over there, yet we know, you know, how dangerous that is, and allows that, you know, that unknown, that uncertainty for there. So I really feel uncomfortable moving forward, again, using the RFMX as the basis, leaving that open even in the early stages of this, of this conversation. The RFMX, of course, was developed 17 years ago. We have learned tremendous amount since that time and have seen the specifics after multiple hurricanes have hit that were not known when that was adopted, again, 17 years ago. And really, that RFMX was site-specific to that area, right up at the foot of the Isabel Holmes Bridge. And I, well, the other reason or cause for concern here is, you know, the ongoing county's responsibility, no matter what we do over there. I know that the, as you mentioned in your report several times, the idea that if people who want to develop over there at a higher level or higher density, that we shift the responsibility onto them for anything that could or would happen. Unfortunately, we, that only holds to a certain extent, and we see that every time we have a hurricane, or we are, you know, the county's held responsible for debris pickup and for re-establishing core, you know, essential services. That would include fire, rescue, sheriff's protection and patrol, and enforcement. These are responsibilities that we cannot shift to other people. So if I, you know, just in a jargon, say, in my mind, it still falls under the category, if we touch it, we own it. There's no way that we completely step away from our full responsibilities accounting, nor should we. That's part of our job. But the second that we start allowing, you know, development of any sort, but certainly that places businesses or, you know, human beings over there, we have the responsibility there that we cannot walk away from. Now, I know that we work in partnership with CFPUA and Duke Energy. Those are some of the core, you know, things that need to happen after any kind of emergency, but they only touch the surface of what the real responsibilities are in protecting property and human lives that we will always have. Those are the main concerns, and so I would, you know, strongly recommend that, you know, in your suggestion, which I know that you're looking for direction, certainly in my opinion, and I'll, you know, reach out to my fellow commissioners to see if we could, before moving ahead, that we establish some of those studies, those specific studies, to gain the more information. I don't think that we have the data right now to even in this early stage move forward with, again, using anything as a basis by right, you know, even in conversation at this point, until we have more specific information. Those are my thoughts at this time. Thank you.
So help me and the public understand what we're doing here, because I'm sure I'm one of those two commissioners that have not been here and been privy to the information that is going on with the West Bank, only what we've read, and you and I spoke a little bit. And for the public, we are in the process of beginning a new land use plan, a master, a zoning plan for the county, correct? And I know that you and I talked about that would take several years. Is the purpose of this to pull out that area on the West Bank so that we can go ahead and look at that now instead of waiting for this three-year process?
Correct. So we had identified, looking at the Western Bank area, and an amendment to the comprehensive plan as one of our more immediate actions, so that we did not have to wait until the entire comprehensive plan update was complete in order to make a move. I know that we don't have a lot of the information that you would like to have in order to move forward. This is intended for us to make sure that we don't continue to have urban mixed-use on our comprehensive plan map if that's not what you want to see, because that's what we have today. We have those provisions in place now. We have zoning in place now that allows for higher-intensity commercial and industrial use. And so the idea is, let's, let's go ahead and put something in place now. We can always reevaluate it if the data shows that we need to, but making sure that we're moving forward with something.
So, so that area will go through the same process if it, if it stayed in the longer three-year plan? You're going to go through the exact same process of the comprehensive plan would just for that area?
Yes, it will be a site-specific or an area-specific amendment to our current plan.
And I, and honestly, I could think of several other areas in the county that I wish were pushed forward that could also be looked at, not to get into where they are, but because we are struggling with so many presentations for density and redevelopment areas that I think need to be looked at. With that said, so currently, it already is zoned in a way that industrial can exist there.
Correct.
And we want to look at what would be the best use of the whole area, whether it be industrial or not, or something else. And you're looking for a go-ahead from us. Can we pull this out and look at this area now instead of waiting three years?
Correct.
And, and I can see the use of that, and personally, I'm not a big fan of industrial across the river. I don't want to see that particularly. So to pull that out makes sense to me as well, and not for the existing people that are listening. I know that you have rights to that. And I know that these private property owners have a right to do what they want to do with their property, but they don't know what they can do right now. And, and that is a concern, and it may be nothing, but that is a concern to me. So I think I would be fine to move forward and let planning staff look at that and make some evaluations and go through the board process, where it'd be planning board, and then come to us and have the public's input and see what the public wants there.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
There's this African proverb that says, if you want to go fast, go alone; if you want to go far, go together. I'm gonna come back to that in a minute. We know that a couple of years ago, that the Wilmington Convention Center flooded with Hurricane Florence. They were shut down for a while in need of extensive repairs to repair sheetrock and other damage that took place as a result of the river rising and flooding taking place. When you look at, most of the development that's taken place, the new development on this side of the river, the apartments and whatnot, in my opinion, are a good ways away from the river to where they would not be impacted by any major flooding, with the exception of the Convention Center and the Embassy Suites Hotel. For me, there's a process that we're going through. Initially, when this was proposed, my thought was it'd be great to have something that looks like downtown Savannah, but recognizing the environmental impacts of that, you know, creates a different thought in my mind, but also a challenge, you know, for us, providing the right services. Coupled with that, you have a developer who I think is in the room today, who is, in my opinion, continuing to try to bully the process. First, going to the town of Leland to get them to annex the property, to force our hand to do something, and now going to the city of Wilmington to try to force our hand again to do something, what I would call prematurely. To me, there's a process, and until we exhaust that process and have a full understanding of what needs to happen, I would not feel comfortable making any decisions in determination at this point. I would definitely encourage my fellow folks who serve on the city council to table this, leave it alone, let the county staff do their job, because they've not even been to one of our sessions that I'm, that I can understand to have any in-depth knowledge of what we're dealing with. It bothers me when you have a developer that's really pushing the envelope and pushing and pushing and trying to bully us into making a decision by asking others to usurp our authority into allowing their project to proceed. To them, I would say shame on you. Trust the process. If the process yields the right results, then you have the ability to do what you want to do, but until we get to that point, we're going to be challenged. You know, I serve on the CFPUA board, and I would not encourage that board to run water and sewer until I have more answers. So if you need water and sewer for your project, I would tell you to slow your roll, step back, take a beat, and let this process unfold, as opposed to wasting resources on something that may not happen, I hope that you hear me clearly, but I would tell you to take a beat. Let our staff do their job, as opposed to trying to bully the county into making a decision that we're not ready for yet. You may get the answer that you're not looking for. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I don't really have much to say at this stage, other than broadly speaking, private property rights are very important to me. I know they're important to the other folks that are up here as well. I don't see an advantage in us waiting to let staff do what they've proposed. It seems like we'll have some better information and answers. We let them do what they're setting forth here, and we can determine through that process what the right course of action is, but it seems appropriate to me at this stage that we let staff do what they're proposing, and I'm happy to talk about it further with y'all here or elsewhere, but I just don't have enough information to be able to say much else, other than I'd like to see what staff wants us to know over the course of this process.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I agree, and Rebecca, again, I know we've had multiple conversations about this, and the thing that we absolutely agree on here, and I think you're hearing from up here, is that we need a new specific riverfront area zoning district. We need to make those changes in there, certainly than what we have now. I guess my appeal is that we move forward with those specific studies that you've already identified to allow us to get more information so that we can, so that we can move forward at being informed. Thing that gives me heartburn, again, in your motion or in what your request is, is that we're using that RFMX zoning district as a basis for us moving forward. I just wish that we would leave that to the side until we have more information. Now, ultimately, it may end up being a good place to start, but I don't have enough information right now, and what I am seeing, especially with the, you know, small photos that you have here, is that we have potential for some really serious issues over there. So rather than to put in, in writing that we're using that as the basis for conditions, the RFMX, I would just leave that out, you know, completely, because that leaves open the possibility of conditional zoning requests. Again, as I said, you know, buildings to a height of 170 feet, steel and glass structures over there, that I, I'm not convinced at this point are appropriate over there for that kind of development. I know that's the extreme in there, but I, leaving that open or leaving that open, that expectation to stakeholders and developers, I think is the wrong expectation to set. So remove that RFMX from the basis at this point, and let's move forward with those studies. Get us some more information.
If I might ask just a clarifying question. So with the baseline, using that riverfront mixed-use district, the concern that you have, in my understanding, is the height. In terms of the other architectural and design features to ensure that what is visible from downtown Wilmington is attractive and in keeping with what you would see in the historic area, that's less of a concern. It's primarily the height that you have worries about?
It's the height and the density that it would allow. I'll just, you know, kind of put this out here. You know, we came very close during the general assembly's deliberations for the budget this year of allowing gambling and casinos here in New Hanover County. We were this close, and you could be darn sure that's coming back at us. I cannot imagine, nor would I like to imagine, a Las Vegas on the Cape Fear River in our future. And as long as there is this potential for conditional zonings, and now we're talking about tens of millions, if not hundreds of millions of dollars in potential investment coming in, I'd like to see us close that window a whole lot more so we don't even have to get into that, that kind of discussion. So it's, it's not just the height, you know, it's the density and the types of businesses that would be allowed over there under the RFMX. So again, rather than, to me, it confuses the issue. I want to pull ahead, and I think everybody on this commission wants to help you get to the point where we can have a zoning district that works for all of us, including the city of Wilmington.
So just a comment, maybe I missed something. This is staff-driven, not developer-driven?
Correct.
Okay, and this is something that you want to start, we're not saying what the density is going to be, or what the zoning is going to be, or what anything is going to be over there. We're allowing you to move forward to find the right zoning for that area across the river.
Correct, and we can take into account- Correct. And we can take into account as well, generally, the process that you would take for this kind of amendment is to go from this Board and then to start working directly with the Planning Board to flesh things out. And you would see it at a final public hearing. It does sound like there may be interest from this Board to have more of a touch point before we go through that process and get too far, to make sure that once the Planning Board has been allowed to provide input, once the public has been allowed to have input, we can provide you an update before it goes through that public hearing process to make sure it's still in line with what you want to see.
What I want to see is you guys do, do the work that needs to be done, and make your best recommendation, and come back to us with that. I don't think we're in a position to make those decisions ourself without your expertise. So I'm fine for you to move forward and do that research.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
From when, when we talked, even if we did go through the process and allow the developers to, to go forward, they still got to go through the state and all the federal agencies, and there's a good chance they'd get kicked out, isn't it?
There, there is a, there is a chance of that, I guess.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I just want to address some of Commissioners Apple's comments. I'm, I'm hearing you, Rob. I am hesitant today for us to be making a policy direction to staff whenever we've advertised that we're not going to be doing that today. We have told everyone that this hearing was going to be a presentation, and then us telling staff, "Go put something together and let us know what our options are." To go ahead and suggest that we can limit possibilities from a policy perspective before we get that information from staff. To me personally, seems like putting the cart before the horse. And I would recommend against us doing that, and just let staff do what has been proposed, and come back to us, and then we can make policy decisions at some later date.
Mr. Chair, if I can respond?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Scalise, yes, I agree. And maybe to get to that, if I could propose a work session that is focused specifically on the ideas and the information the staff has in a longer, very, you know, focused period, a work session, so that we can get all the information, and also provide the information to our two commissioners, who did not have the advantage of those other two work sessions that we had. Something that would be solely focused on that, to bring forward some of these specifics. And hopefully, to do some of the specific studies, and to get those off the ground.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir.
Just want to bring some clarity. Go ahead, go ahead, Chris.
So, I apologize for inserting. I, I want to make sure, as staff, we're hearing very clearly. And, and there, there's a lot of granular discussion between Commissioners Apple and Rebecca that I'm not familiar with. But, but I don't believe this leads at all with the assumption that RFMX is the baseline. The reality is, that's what's on the ground today. The, an owner of property where that exists can proceed with a, a development today. My understanding is that Rebecca is suggesting that there be a new riverfront district of less intensity than what is allowed through RFMX to go forward and be applied preemptively across the entire area. So, so I, I don't want the Board to, to believe that we're advocating for RFMX as the baseline. Rebecca, if I'm wrong, tell me. I'm just based on, on what I'm hearing. The other thing is, I'm not sure of the studies that are being asked for, because the understanding I have is there's a limited detailed study that can be done until there is a specific project that is proposed. I don't know that we can ever give the Board the certainty that it wants until there is a site project. And what I think Rebecca is saying, give us the space to redefine what is in the best interest of that area, then have the rezoning, and then the studies by the individual property owners can be done based on those outcomes. But there is RFMX on the ground, as zoned on the Western Bank. As, Madam Vice Chair, as you noted, there is also industrial zoning. The objective is to effectively, from Board direction, preemptively rezone those areas to be more accommodating to what both the Board, the public, and the environmental constraints can acknowledge. So, maybe what I've said doesn't make sense to anybody but me. I'm just trying to process what I've heard as the cross-boarding to make sure everybody understands what's on the ground today, and that Rebecca is not asking for RFMX to be the baseline. If the Board wants to take conditional rezoning opportunities out of that new riverfront use district, staff will be glad to do that. But there are options that private property owners can proceed with today. That is not what we're proposing to be the baseline.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
And, and, and Chris, I appreciate the clarity there, and I do understand that, and I'm, I'm good with that.
Me too.
I, I did want to clarify that Commissioner, Commissioner Pierce asked a question, is this developer-driven? At this time, it is not, but this whole process was developer-driven. When the developer brought a project to us to develop across the river, and because we weren't moving fast enough, the developer withdrew that, then went to the town of Leland and asked to be annexed. And now is going to the city of Wilmington to ask them to be annexed. So there's some developer pressure being put on this process. And it's what, it's what really got us going down this road. And again, my opinion is that we take our time to let staff come up with a plan or their thought process on what we should do, and then proceed from there. So I'm good with that proposal.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Prior to that, I just want to respond to a couple of things that our county manager said. Chris, I think you're referring to, some of that discussion was around the hydrology study, which absolutely needs to have something specific that's there. The studies that I was referring to, that have been proposed, are the, the effects of compound flooding. And the second one, monitoring for rising sea levels and the effect on the Cape Fear River. As naive as I, I wish I wasn't, but I was, I thought that we already had those monitors in place. But as it turns out, we don't, to give us that specific information. So there's a lot of conflicting information that we were hearing from all over the place, that, you know, yes, it's rising like crazy, no, it's not rising like crazy. I'd like to have some hard data, so that we can put into it. But I agree with you, and once again, that you, I think you found the compromise point, that if we can take the conditional zoning piece out of here, that certainly raises my comfort level. That's the part of the RFMX that we were using, that was suggested in the information that we were handed in our packets, that was being used as a basis only in the conversation, in the preliminary discussions there. But it's really, the heart of it, it's the conditional zoning opportunities. If we could take that out of the discussion at this point, I, it raises my comfort level. That's all.
So, I, I'm not suggesting that, that we should take it. I'm just saying, if that's the, the will of the Board, then conditional rezoning does not have to be a part of whatever new zoning district the Board creates. But there are districts on the ground today that do allow for property owners to proceed with by right and/or conditional rezoning. My, my impression from the Board as a body is not to take any policy option off the table today. There, there may be a time and a place for conditional rezoning on that side that does make sense, but that needs to be determined through the, the review process.
And i-if I might just clarify quickly, it may reassure you, Commissioners Apple, that when the reference to using RFMU as a base was written, it was for the architectural standards that were identified in that district, because they were determined after a long public process that had previously been conducted. So it was not related to intensity, and we will definitely take a look at height, as I know that is a consideration. In terms of the studies that have been recommended, even if we were to move forward today with those studies, we would not have the results right away. So I, I, we, we are hearing that the studies may be something that's important to this Board, and we can explore that. You've got your budget process coming up, and we can include that consideration as part of that. But, but we will not be getting results right away that can tell us, yes, this is a good idea, or, or if this is a bad idea. So I just wanted to make sure that those things were clear.
Very clear, Rebecca, but, you know, we got to start them sometime to get that valuable information for this, as for other decisions that we make. But as far, again, as the RF, RFMX, I was a, a part of some of those discussions seventeen years ago. And just the conditions in the growth of our county, and our city, and the conditions of the Cape Fear River have changed. You know, we have learned a whole lot more since that time. And that's, you know, I guess, a part of my, my concern. So I, you know, I think I've said it.
Well, just on the topic of studies, let me just say, I don't think the county should pay for those studies. I, I think that is something developers should pay for, as they have a, a, a project that they want to put out there. They should be the ones putting out the money for those studies on that area.
For the monitoring studies, to let us know how the tide is changing over time, or the ones specific to the site?
Specific to the site.
Yes. And, and I think that that is our understanding as well.
Anybody else?
I make a motion that we approve staff to move forward with implementing their study recommendations.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes. Thank you, Rebecca. Okay. Appointments for committee?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Is it, is it possible for our clerk to re-advertise the Commission on African American History, Heritage and Culture?
Yes, sir.
I would love for us to re-advertise that and get a few more applicants.
We can do that.
If possible, the Board's fine with that.
I second that, if that's a motion, to make that happen.
Okay. New Hanover County Jury Commission?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Sheila Nicholson.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
New Hanover County Juvenile Crime Prevention Council?
Nominate Akiva Miller.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes.
Commissioners, there are two vacancies for that. Sorry.
Sure is.
I'll re-advertise that one, too.
Is that okay?
We'll re-advertise for the one vacancy, yes.
Okay. And this is going to be a tough one here. New Hanover County Nursing Home Committee and Advisory Committee?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Donna, uh, Gulam?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I believe that's it? Ms. Clerk, do you have anything?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just want to congratulate our county manager and our team on our success at the LGC. As I made a comment after the meeting, looking at the folks that were assembled as a team that our county manager assembled, handpicked a team of great experts and leaders in county government that have given great counsel and advice, and allowed us to be victorious at the LGC. I want to commend Commissioner Jane Scalise on his great acumen in representing the county in both word and deed, written and spoken, as he presented to the LGC on both occasions. And I believe it was through your efforts that really helped us win our argument to our Communications Department for putting together a great communication strategy to reach out to all the folks in the LGC, to our Board for being a great part of this process, and to the business community that really supported us in this effort. I want to say thank you to all those folks, and looking forward to seeing this transformational project take place downtown here in the coming future.
Thanks, sir. Want to give Mark a little bit of help on that, hired all these fine people. And also, we need to congratulate Mr. Barfield. He's become my granddaddy. Again.
Again.